All right, welcome to the September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Select Board Meeting. This is Select Board Chair Beneath Hamavathy. I will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zorco?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and Town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the Zoom, in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. No one on Zoom? Okay, great. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin here with Select Board announcements. The Fall Special Town Meeting is set for Tuesday, November twelfth, at seven PM at the Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. Citizen petition articles are due in the Select Board's office no later than noon on Friday, September twenty-seventh. In order for a petition to be guaranteed placement on the Special Town Meeting warrant, one hundred name signatures, addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. You can find forms, instructions, and additional information at longmeadowma.gov/towmiending. The Complete Streets Advisory Group has launched a survey to help inform their work on the updated prioritization plan. All community members who walk, bike, run, drive, or use public transportation are encouraged to take this short, eight-question survey, which will close on September eighteenth. The results will help prioritize areas for improvement. To learn more about the Complete Streets' work and to take the survey, please visit The local cultural council grant applications are now available. The deadline to submit an application is October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. To learn more about the process through the Massachusetts Cultural Council and to complete an online application, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. Okay. We will now move into resident comments. Is anyone here present for a resident comment? We'll start with you right here. Yeah, in the front. And so you can move up to the microphone, say your name, address, and then you'll have three minutes to make a resident comment.
Donna Fisher, thirty-three Dexbury Lane. How many Long Meadow legacy trees? That's defined as trees that are over seventy-five years of age. Is the Long Meadow Middle School Planning Committee considering cutting down on their site? I would like an answer at some point, you know, during their research. Mariah Day, project manager for Davy Tree, presented the Long Meadow Select Board with tree facts and figures on seven five twenty-three. She said one tree produces twenty-six pounds of oxygen per year. Urban forestry also helps to absorb storm water runoff and reduce flooding and soil erosion. Trees reduce soil, air pollution, and absorb carbon dioxide, which reduces the heat effect, the heating effect, in populated areas and slows climate change. They can also reduce noise pollution by up to fifty percent and feed the human soul. Long Meadow is a member for twenty-one years and has been a Tree City Award winner given by the Arbor Day Foundation. No proposed design nor thoughtful landscaping can replace our precious trees and greenland taken up by a significant two-story brick-and-mortar building structure surrounded by large tarred pavements for parking lots and roadways throughout the property. For removal of trees, the Mass. General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, Section Five of the Hundred and Ninety-third General Court of Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires a hearing and describes the process by which these trees are to be posted and how notice of these trees hearings are given. Or are the Long Meadow Town zoning regulations just for common residents that don't apply to town committees and boards? We're starting to think that removing the existing schools and keeping them there, right where they are, as neighborhood schools, might be the best option. We are pro-education. So, how many Long Meadow trees is the Long Meadow Middle School Building Committee cutting down now? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Minutirani, five Lexington Road. Long, I need to use my teaching voice, Long Meadow. I'm a professor and part of the Sustainability Energy Committee of our town, and also I was part of the long-term strategic planning. With my students, we did a major research about our town and now doing something, a slides which I have sent it to, you know, the relevant people and they presented to town. One of the major causes of emission in Massachusetts and Long Meadow is private cars. And the new, new research that just came from Colorado and Penn, fifty years from now, the cognitive capabilities of population will be down fifty percent because of CO2 emission. And considering that thirty percent of our population in Long Meadow, they are below the age of eighteen. And what we have seen as far as the private cars and standing in line, I talked to Dr. O'Shea yesterday, what we're going to do about all these cars. I talked to our Senator Jake Oliviera that, and he said, according to the state law, if you are one, less than one mile away, you don't have to take the bus. But there are tons of law cases that the towns can overrule, overrule the state laws. But the things that we have been talking about, absolutely renovation of these two high, middle schools, but combining them together, we're dealing with a lot of future issues, and one of them definitely CO2 emission and this younger generation that will be subjected to it. And as a professor, I look at all these kids as the future students in the university, and that really worries me because, and the other thing is putting so many people on their one building. In my university, we have a fantastic, what we call Accessibility Center. The students, with challenges, they register. We used to have two hundred students register. Now we have three thousand students register because the environment has changed, the depression, the anxiety, and if something like COVID happens with seven hundred students under one umbrella, then how we, how we deal with it. So those are some of the issues of the future as far as the health and the welfare of the students and the health and the welfare of the people living around those areas. Those are something that I think definitely needs our attention.
Great, thank you so much.
Hi there. I know most of you.
Oh, sorry. Just name an address. Please start. Sorry about that.
Betsy Port, two one two Farmington Road. I'm here to talk about trees. Donna, her statement actually dovetails perfectly into what I'm going to say. Long Meadow loves their trees, and we have been a tree city for, at least since nineteen ninety-seven. We have worked hard for our trees to remain healthy, and every year we celebrate Arbor Day festivities in the public schools. We have at least twelve thousand on-the-street trees and several thousand more in parkland. I am here to echo what the tree wardens of our present and past have said. We need to make tree safety a priority in our town. About a month ago, a microburst hit us in Long Meadow, and there was quite a lot of tree damage. I called Josh Levine the next morning because Farmington Avenue was hit very hard. I live on Farmington Road. Some tree damage was on private property, but I am here to talk about the tree belt trees. Some of these were pulled over by the roots from a combination of wind damage and wet ground. The new tree warden, Leah and I, have had several conversations. A week before the big storm, a large tree limb next to my driveway on the tree belt fell and nearly missed a dog walker. Earlier in the summer, another tree belt tree limb missed another dog walker, suddenly falling unexpectedly. We are setting ourselves up for injury of innocent bystanders. The liability could be huge, and at this point, Leah, our new tree warden, has a long list of trees that need attention. The budget for the town tree care is approximately a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, and this is not enough. We need to make a separate budget for storm cleanup of trees because every time there's a storm, her budget gets wiped out. We need a separate budget for the storm cleanup and another line item for tree damage removal inside of our parks. The tree warden evaluates and makes recommendations to trim or remove trees, but things are not moving fast. I have seen trees marked for removal, and then six months later, they're still there. We moved here about twenty-eight years ago into what most people would call the Kibbe Track, but the original name was Forest Acres. It was a forest. Many of the trees in and around my yard are older than our ninety-three-year-old home, and this area was not clear-cut when the building began. Although beautiful, it is getting scary. Some of my neighbor's trees have become threats. If their trees fall in my yard, it becomes my problem, and in all probability, my homeowner's insurance may not cover the cost.
I'm sorry, it's at three minutes. If you want to just wrap up quickly.
Wrap up quickly, okay. Well, it's almost done, but I'll basically say, I think we need to do more to support the tree warden, and we need to anticipate things getting worse over time because these trees have matured. It's a beautiful tree canopy, but there's definitely a threat. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else here to make comment?
Jane Newman, fifty-six Magnolia Circle. Five years ago, the house next door to me burned down and was left unkept and full of vermin, ticks, rodents, and termites. The lot was never taken care of. Last year, there was, there were five water main breaks in front of my property, and it compromised my property and my driveway. The town said they weren't responsible. Now, we have a construct, we have construction on the street to repair the water main pipes, so we have the, we can have appropriate water pressure. The construction firm, Balcesar, has taken over the property next door and turned it into a full construction site, full of dump trucks, excavators, pipes, bulldozers, and other large apparatus. The noise, dust, and dirt is overwhelming and unhealthy. All day long, the trucks dump gravel, sand, and dirt. Their weight shakes my foundation and is quite startling. Why wasn't I told about this decision? Aren't there any bylaws or ordinances to protect town residents? No boundaries were set, lines were set up except on the wetlands side, on the other side of the house. The trucks are idling at six-thirty in the morning, and the dirt and dust has infiltrated my house and made the ear unhealthy. Do I live in a town where residents aren't protected and able to have a say in protecting their property and their health? There needs to be more humane, a more humane way to repair the infrastructure of the town, repairing the property when compromised and communicating with the residents when they are affected. Nobody told me that this was going to happen. I want to know how much longer this project is going to last, and if the sewer storm drains and regrading of the street is also included in the project. That was supposed to happen when the street was repaired over five years ago, and they ran out of money. The water pours down the street from primrose and runs over my neighbor and my property, causing a great deal of water and damage. There needs to be attention to this issue as promised.
Great, thank you.
And done in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Tom Narigan. My wife and I have lived at seventy-seven Woodside Drive for twenty-two years. We've been longtime and continued supporters of improvements to Long Meadow schools, which both of my daughters attended, and as well as other much-needed projects, including the Adult Center, the DPW Garage, and the high school. I have a background in civil engineering. In forty-five years, and during forty-five years, I've worked as a transportation planner, engineer, manager, and consultant, principally in California, Connecticut, and Massachusetts. When I first heard about the possibility of a consolidated middle school, I was surprised to find out that it was proposed to be built on an, and what is already a congested site here, the high school and shops, and that this proposal was being taken seriously. So I decided to review the site feasibility traffic study. I have to say that I was not surprised, but I was certainly concerned about things in the report, like an additional backup of ninety-three cars in the morning and afternoon as a result of the consolidated school, and that there would be so much difficulty for people to get out of the site that the traffic software that was used by the consultant was unable to determine how long the actual delay would be for parents leaving the school. But more important, I found a number of things that caused me to question the methodology, the results, and most importantly, the findings that this site would be feasible based on traffic impacts. We brought these shortcomings to the building committee's attention at the Butters Meeting in August, expecting that the committee would likely have its consultants revise or redo the traffic feasibility study and revisit the site selection process. It's now quite clear that our comments and feedback were discussed by the committee, which is a good thing, but they had no impact on the decision to move forward with the Williams site. So to use a transportation metaphor, it's like standing on the railroad tracks, waving a red flag to an approaching train, and having the engineer wave back to you, but not slow down or stop the train. Fortunately, a second, more detailed traffic study is scheduled this month. Hopefully, this study will include accurate assumptions, reliable information on how many vehicles will travel to and from the Williams site, impacts due to weather, bicycling, walking, special events, emergency vehicles, and, most important, expected traffic and safety impacts on local streets throughout the neighborhood and the town, actually throughout the town.
And I'm sorry, we've hit three minutes if you want to wrap up.
Okay. All of these items were missing from the original report.
Great, thank you so much.
I'm not quite.
Oh, yeah, we've already passed three minutes. So, yeah, thank you, appreciate you. Anyone else here, resident comment?
I'd like to follow up on the traffic guide, Tom. We lived there for, since eighty-six, and I've been in Long Meadow on Congress, on William Street since the nineteen fifties. Seven hundred students in this small location. I attended the first meeting in June. To me, it was a sales pitch. I could not visualize. Traffic today each year is heavier and heavier. This building is being planned for the next sixty years. Where would traffic be? Where would, how many more trucks there going to be? It's just, can you picture seven hundred early teenagers, thirteen, fourteen years old, running around? It's a mess today, but I am looking tomorrow, five years, ten years from today. You know, some people got to have common sense to figure things out. I know there's an expense. I know that we've got to have a school. You know, we have to bite the bullet. We need two schools? We might have to pay, but the best way out of this is to renovate, remodel the two middle schools as it is. It is safe. It's confined. You don't find eighteen-wheelers driving around Glenbrook. Three hundred and fifty kids, that's, I can see the chaos. I would like to see the MSBA, which sort of contact, come down and stand in the driveway in the rear and see the backup of the car, especially as we get into the fall weather. But you got to have common sense. You know, street smart is one thing, book smart is another, but you got to have a combination of both. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here for resident comment?
My name's Peter Coop. I live at thirty-three Dexbury Lane. I'm going to read something that Bill DiGiulio couldn't, could come. He's on vacation, and so I'm going to read this for him. What is a realistic financial commitment necessary to support the combination of schools at the Williams Middle School site? Recent videos and photos expose the effects of severe travel, traffic congestion to the general public, town authorities, project consultants, news stations, and state representatives. As witnesses to the issue, this photographic evidence has already had an impact on current conditions, and it demands additional costly mitigation if schools are combined on the Williams site, raising the population to seven hundred kids. The Williams site is too small to solve problems on the property itself. The site and surrounding infrastructure must satisfy zoning, police, and fire authorities. It is, it is worrying that Long Meadow governing bodies and support services have not officially and publicly weighed in on site selection for a school. We are told they will have agency during the next year before the final vote to pay for the project. We expect their input to increase the true cost of approving the Williams site. Given its small size, what will be required of the spaces external to the Williams school property? Would we pay for police presence during drop-off hours and for all events? Would we pay to widen Bliss and Williams for turn lanes? Add a retaining wall on Williams? Add more sidewalks? Would we build speed bumps, install traffic lights? Would taxpayers support widespread busing, hopefully before these other costly measures are taken? School hours are not the only worry. The building committee has included in the discussion an auditorium, bringing parents into the school more regularly, and the, and the community hub concept. Given the neighbors' experience with weekend use of the athletic field and the recent back-to-school nights, we can anticipate everything evening and weekend hours too, and the decades to follow. The limitations of this small site may have an even greater impact. True, we do not know whether another site would require as many costly solutions to traffic and parking problems as we can expect for the Williams site.
We've hit three minutes if you want to wrap up real quickly.
Wow, that was fast. Personally, I would ask that going forward, no committee be allowed to rest funding for a project of this magnitude on a decision made prior to public knowledge of the advice, and will consent of zoning, police, fire, and other authorities like them. I suggest that a tax bill should include notice of any project that will substantially increase taxes, and I want it to include one resource that will announce community forum and upcoming commitments under review. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see somebody over here for resident comment?
My name is Barbara Cordell Allen. I live at one forty-three Yardsley Road, and we've lived here forty-five years. This town is changing. Unfortunately, we have a house that we lived in, and we had tenants from Holy Hell in there, and it took us seven months to get rid of them. We, we had notified the dog catcher or animal control of a pit bull that they brought in we did not approve of, and it wound up that there were nine eventually. They ruined the house. We asked the animal catcher to go back there, refused. She said, they're nice people. I've sent all of you copies of documents that I had, so you have them. A neighbor called and reported the same. He even rounded up the dogs and brought them back to the house, tried to get the dog catcher over there, only to get told that they're, they're friends' dogs, and they'd be leaving in a week. They didn't leave. They just added more, I think, I don't know, but I think that they were breeding the dogs. There's nothing that's nice about these people either. The police were aware of the situation at that house. I don't know if there is a friendship between the animal catcher, but she definitely did not do her job. We found out that the dog had chased other people down the street and that nothing was done by the animal catcher. The town manager was notified of this and of problems that didn't, and I sent a letter to her, did not get a call or a response. Until I placed another call demanding a response, I got one. Not satisfactory at all. The police were called by the neighbor because of loud noise and playing basketball. They joined in and played basketball at eleven-thirty at night, high-fiving the people. Their peace was disrupted, not only by the people, but by the police. I think it's really poor judgment by the police department to go into this community policing. They need to also think of the residents. There's a time and a place for that. There's another problem that the building inspector gave a building permit for these people to put solar panels on my house. They forged my name. It's quite obvious. Any child could tell that it was a forged name, and nothing was done about it. The electric company stopped it. I can't believe what is going on in this town. I can't believe what is going on in this town, that this type of problem has existed. It's been existing. The police were called to be at the eviction on Thursday. An officer showed up, he did not arrest them for animal abuse. There was a baby living in that house. They never even reported it to Family and Youth, whatever you call that program, for that kid to be taken, but we managed to get the commissioner involved on our own. But it, something needs to be done. It's gone way too far.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I also have one person in the queue.
Oh, okay, great, thanks.
Wajid Mahmood, forty-five Woodside Drive. Hi, everyone. I live on forty-five Woodside Drive. First, I wanna say we are not anti-middle school. At all, at all. Also, I am not afraid of my taxes going up. I am happy to pay more for new school. However, we have many questions and concern about Williams Street location. I can give you many reasons why Williams site is not appropriate, but I will just focus on few. First one is safety. I don't think any one of you have any idea what it's like to be on Williams or Terry, Terry Drive at school time. Every day, it's disaster waiting to happen, and you trying to double the kids and cars there. Long Meadow is one of the best school systems around, and people here are pretty well off, including myself. That being said, Long Meadow kids are spoiled, and they think their parents supposed to do pick-up and drop-off for them. Everyone, every day, imagine double the traffic everywhere. Another concern of mine is you going to cut all those beautiful trees on William to make way for this. Another concern of mine is average fire truck is ten foot wide. Fire and police use Williams to go all around Long Meadow. Imagine there is an emergency and both sides of William have traffic on it, and fire truck is blowing their horn. It will be panic everywhere, and we will have disaster on our hands. So please rethink this location and choose different one. We all can get along just fine. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else here in person wanting to make a resident comment? Okay, go with the Zoom.
Hello, Select Board, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you. Just start with your name, address, and then you can go ahead and get started.
Jeremy Dugan and Penny Dugan from Fifty-two South Park Ave. Good evening to the Select Board, and thank you for your service to our community. My wife, Penny and I are hoping that the Select Board will consider the information provided to you and correspondent for consideration for allowing pollinator gardens and tree belt areas. We were encouraged by a DPW employee in the town manager to open up this topic for discussion with the Select Board, and hope that he would have a positive view of such an initiative. The Massachusetts Department of Agriculture Resources, Mdar, and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, have recommended that local communities and residents assist with creating native plant spaces for birds, bees, hummingbirds, butterflies, and other pollinators to help combat habitat loss, erosion, help conserve water when compared to lawns, and to fight against climate change. I think this is a unique way for the Select Board to govern, engage with nature in a positive way by providing more options to the citizens of Long Meadow. According to Mdar's Massachusetts Pollinator Protection Plan, homeowners and gardeners can play an important part in supporting pollinators by maintaining, enhancing, and or increasing, increasing pollinator habitat on their property. The key to thinking about pollinator habitat is considering plants that provide food, water, and shelter to meet the needs of all pollinators. These plants can include both native and non-native plants and ornamentals, although it has been shown that gardens with native plants tend to support more diverse pollinator groups, while also being drought tolerant and requiring less maintenance than those of non-native plantings. We believe that our underutilized open spaces along tree belts that should be used for these purposes to have three seasons of beautiful color and lots of natural beauty with minimal maintenance costs. My wife and I have done a lot of work to make our backyard space friendly to not-native and non-native pollinators and other creatures, and my wife just had our yard designated as a certified wildlife habitat, and we leave almost in point-two acres. Beyond that, we keep bees to help with the pollination in our neighborhood and area, and unexpectedly, the first-year beekeeper is able to proudly harvest almost sixty pounds of honey from our hives. So we feel like we're doing our part and want to expand these opportunities with the tree belts. Please consider this request, as well as our letter and the associated incorporated references, as you consider to add this topic to a future meeting's agenda for open discussion. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you so much. All right, miss anybody here? Okay, all right, thank you. We're gonna be closing resident comment. We are now going to be moving on to our joint meeting with the school committees. So I don't know if we have anyone else in the school committee in person that wants to take a seat up here?
We have someone else online as well.
Got someone?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, a couple folks, okay. We'll let them log in.
I reconvene our school committee meeting from earlier, and we'll call roll for attendance. Jamie Hench?
Here.
Adam Rosenblum?
Here.
Michaela Fitzgerald?
Here.
Julie Morgan?
Here.
Zach Faridan?
Here.
And Nicole Schwanier here.
All right, great, thank you so much. All right, school committee, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We'll return the favor and come to your meeting next week. But we are here for very important business, and that is to interview for the school committee vacancy that we currently have. You know, the town of Long Meadow is so lucky to have such talented, experienced residents that want to devote their time and energy and resources to give back to the town, and I think that's what's happened here with these applicants. And I know, just looking at the applicants myself, I think we've got very qualified folks, and, and that's a great prob, it's gonna be tough to pick, and that's a great problem for us to have. So I want to thank all the applicants at the start for applying and putting yourself up for this vacancy. Earlier today, we uploaded to the agenda the applicant interview process, so I just kind of want to go over that quickly, so that everyone is on the same page and folks listening at home kind of understand what's going on. I used a, I used the way that the applicants were numbered in the memo, and then used a random number generator online to create a interview order, so we will have an interview order that's been randomized. Each applicant, when they get called up, will have three, up to three minutes to provide a self-introduction, explaining why they have applied for this appointment, and then after each opening statement, a question-to-answer session will follow. Each applicant will be asked up to six questions, and I am going to recognize members of the school committee and Select Board that want to answer, ask questions, and I will try to make sure that it is evenly distributed between the school committee and Select Board, as well as within our boards and committees. We, the questions that we ask should be designed so that the applicants can demonstrate their interest and qualifications, and we should be refraining from asking questions of a cross-examination type manner. And, you know, unless I allow so, we're not going to allow follow-up questions. And then after we have interviewed all of the applicants, we will then move into a general discussion phase, where the Select Board and school committee can discuss the general attributes that the board and committees value, as well as talking about the strengths, assets, and valuable experiences of the individual applicants. And I think that this portion is important, just because, obviously, as a school committee, you all are gonna be looking at this much differently than the Select Board, and you guys are gonna have a different perspective, and I would love to hear what you guys value, what you guys would think would make a good member of the school committee. So if, I don't know if you all have anything to add to that before we kind of jump into this?
No.
All right, great, okay, perfect. So the first person that, if they are here, that we'll bring up to interview is Sarah Fernandez.
Hello.
Thank you so much for joining us, thank you so much for applying. So like I mentioned, we'll begin with an opening statement, up to three minutes, and then after that, we'll ask you some questions.
Yeah, not a problem. So my name is Sarah Grayshack Fernandez. I am a licensed mental health counselor, a board-certified behavior analyst, and a licensed applied behavior analyst here in the state of Massachusetts. I'm also a parent here in Long Meadow to a little three-year-old, so she'll soon be entering into the school system. I have worked in the surrounding area for about the past ten years, and part of the reason why my husband and I moved to Long Meadow was for the school system. And when we got, you know, the call came out, it was something that I felt like I could do to help the town with my understanding of children. We know that students today are facing a mental health crisis, as most other individuals are, not only in the state of Massachusetts, but nationwide. Forty-eight percent of youth ages fourteen to twenty-four recently has, as in twenty-twenty-one, reported feeling sad and hopeless. And so, you know, while we recognize that mental health is important, I feel that my expertise, not only in mental health, but behavioral health, will be able to bring a unique view to the school board in things such as professional development, performance standards, advocacy.
Great, thank you so much. All right, anybody have a question? Mark, go ahead.
Thank you for applying, Sarah. I guess my, my question is, what, what is it that you'd like to accomplish as a member of the school, school committee in the next, you're only gonna have nine months, because whoever gets appointed has got to run next year.
Hit the ground running. I'm, no, I think, like I said, professional development, I'm, you know, there, there is a need for teachers to, you know, not only do what they do in teaching, their academics, but also understanding mental health and behavioral health challenges for not only students who are on IEPs or are in other special ed programs such as 504s, but also for the everyday student.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
One of the goals of the committee is always to be engaged collaboratively with other committees and elected bodies around town, as well as the school department, our educators, and our community. What are some of the experiences you've had that might be helpful in contributing to that collaboration?
Absolutely. So right now, I work for the Gundara Mental Health Center, and I'm the director of three different programs at our agency. I am the director of in-home therapy, intensive hospital diversion, and our DMH community support flux team. With that, I am in charge of all of the hiring needs. I'm in charge of, you know, making sure that we are still in good relations with DMH. We have meetings once a month with DMH. Intensive hospital diversion is a brand-new program in the Children's Behavioral Health Initiative world, and with that, I need to reach out to the surrounding mobile crisis facilities, Bay State, and really make those connections in order to help support them with what their needs are. So I feel that experience would be able to work hand-in-hand with making those connections with you guys and other committees.
Thank you for applying, appreciate it.
Great, thank you. I have a question. Could you talk a little bit about what you think are the biggest challenges facing our students today?
Sure. I'm, I think that's gonna go back to mental health, not to, you know, beat a dead horse. I, but in the state of Massachusetts, you know, prior to the pandemic, there was a high rate of, you know, youth, young individuals reporting sadness, hopelessness, and that's only been exemplified, you know, with our social distancing that we had to do through the pandemic, and now we're seeing, you know, on the back end of those things, the same rates are still occurring. And so, I mean, that, that's super important, because you don't necessarily know what an individual is going through.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Josh?
So joining the school committee at this time, you'd have the, the pleasure of not too far away from getting, jumping into budget season. Have you reviewed the school budget, and do you, to understand, actually, let me step back. What kind of budget do you work with now, and do you understand?
Do I stand, understand budgeting?
Oh, no, the budget, yeah, the budgeting issues that we have for, at the school committee.
Sure, so I haven't looked at the school committee budget, but I do manage two budgets out of the three, because the DMH is contract, so I don't have a budget per se for them. But I am first in how to make a budget work.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, sure.
How large are, how much money are we talking about for the budgets to manage now?
Um, I mean, rough guesstimation, my in-home therapy program should be bringing in at least five million this fiscal year, if not much more.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Julie, Zach?
I'll take that.
Oh, Andrew?
Thanks again for applying. Again, we have an embarrassment of riches with all the applicants this year, it's really great. Sometimes, as you probably know, being on the school committee can be, can handle a lot of controversial issues. You know, sometimes the members have to make tough decisions that may disappoint those in our community who might support an initiative or a new program that we aren't able to do for some reason, or aren't able to fund, and sometimes you may know some of these proponents personally. So in your prior work, have you had any experience kind of making such kinds of tough decisions and sometimes controversial decisions, and how might you approach such a situation, and fellow townspeople who might strongly disagree with your decision?
Yeah, I mean, as a director, I make those tough decisions and those tough calls probably on a daily basis. I'm, I think one of the big things is going to be listening to all sides to make sure that everybody feels heard and feels understood. I'm, you know, when it comes to, you know, having the disappointment or the letdown of something not going your way, you know, making sure that you are, felt like you are being heard is gonna be one of the most important things. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, so that is six questions, so thank you so much for joining us tonight and for applying, and we will be voting on the appointment next Tuesday at the school committee meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Haven't had that happen before. All right, next up is Bizrat, is that, how you pronounce Bizrat Abibi? And if you can start with your introductory statement, up to three minutes, and I think I forgot to mention that in response during the Q and A session, answers are going to be limited to two minutes, but we didn't have that problem unfortunately, so, please, please go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Bizrat Abbeba, I live on two-six-seven Bliss Road. I have lived in Long Meadow for the past ten years. I have two teenagers in high school, first year and junior. My, both my kids have been able to enjoy the Long Meadows School System for, for the past ten years. By profession, I'm a social worker. Currently, I'm the Associate Vice President for Community Behavioral Health Inc. It's located in Enfield, in Windsor, Connecticut. As you can tell from my accent, you know, I'm an immigrant. I moved to this country about twenty-five years ago. I was in my mid-twenties to complete my theological studies. I used to study in Catholic seminary to, to become a Catholic priest, and I gave that up, and I got married, and I'm, I'm here. So one of the reasons, you know, I, I chose to apply for this role is really, it's time for me to engage in public services. There were, the reason I'm here today is because a lot of people have helped me to be who I am and to achieve what I've achieved in, in my professional career. to achieve what I've achieved in my professional career. So it's time to give back for the community that I have been able to enjoy, as well as my, you know, my kids have enjoyed learning in this school system. You know, the contribution I would bring into this committee is that my background in financial management, policy creation and implementation, administering multiple programs. And also, I had the opportunity to be able to teach in higher ed system and also provide student centered services at MIT as a student support service dean. I would bring all these professional experiences and expertise into this field. And sure, you know, that's why I'm interested in applying for this role. And I hope it to all of you to ask me questions.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone want to start off with a question? Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. And I certainly echo what Andrew said, as well as Veneet. I mean, we have great candidates. So I would urge anyone who isn't chosen tonight to try to serve on other committees as well. But really impressive resumes. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. My question's just really fairly general, but I'd be interested to hear if you see improvements that could be made within the school, Long Meadow Public Schools? And what would those, what would those be during your tenure?
Yeah, I know, I echo what Sarah also talked about in her conversation with you about focusing on really working with our teachers, administrators, as well as parents and students on the wellbeing of the students. We do really a good job in honing on academic excellence, but you know, at least from my experience over the past 10 years, we could do a lot better in terms of improving the wellbeing of our, our children's in the school settings. Means that, you know, we can provide very specific and targeted professional development that focus on whether it's trauma informed teaching approach or emotional intelligence improvement work for both, for the teachers as well as for the students. That would be my priority.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Jamie?
Thank you for applying. Truly, I think it's wonderful. Just echo what everybody else said. Just aside from wellbeing, because obviously that's, that's a hot topic, right? If you were to look at the Long Meadow Public Schools and we said, hey, you know, choose your path, what do you want to work on? And you got, you know, jump into it. Are you, what areas do you have the most passion about?
Yeah, so really, you know, I'm a social worker. I identify myself as a social worker. We have this theoretical approach that we embrace as social workers that focus on social justice and the person in the environment. And you know, we look at the individual through, you know, through the lens of this big approach that is, you know, the individual is a combination of who they are as a family member or in their social context, financially, economically, racially, and all that stuff. So our kids really need to be encouraged to explore and be curious about all these things. But specifically to what you said, you know, instead of really perhaps focusing on, you know, what type of person you want to be, come as a lawyer or a teacher or something, I would focus on what kind of individual you would like to be when you turn whatever age. And I think that would allow kids to really form who they are at this young age and perhaps being able to contribute at a later age and be well informed citizens. So.
Thank you. Mark?
Ken, thank you also for applying. The nine months between now and next June will go like that. And you have some really interesting goals. And so I guess my question would be is, if you see your goals moving along, would you consider running for the school committee in next June?
Yeah, it will depend on the experience I'm going to have. I guess.
Oh, no.
But you know, public service is really important and I would, I would explore multiple ways of serving the community.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think we've got Zach with a question.
Thank you. And thank you for your application. Very excited to learn a little bit more. I'd be curious to know, you mentioned wanting to be able to give back to the community that has given so much to you. Do you have any recent examples of opportunities that you've had to serve or give back in the community?
Yeah, thanks for asking that question, Zach. And yeah, I have had a good history working with you and other Long Meadow town members on the diversity and inclusion task force about a few years back. And that's one thing that I contributed to the community. I think we delivered a good, well thought out recommendations for the town board. To be specific, that's it, but in my work, you know, again, as a social worker, I think every day we strive to contribute to the communities. So I see it as everyday contribution. And one of my big responsibility now is to provide medication assisted treatment programs in prison settings. And I oversee seven programs in seven prisons and jails in Connecticut. And that's really targeting the most marginalized community, members of our community who needed the services, who are at risk of dying from overdose, especially when they get out of prisons and jails. And my job is to make sure that these individuals are being provided proper care while inside the jail and also when they come back to our communities. So I see that as also as a contribution to the community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Adam?
You know, it probably sounds like a tired old song. You keep saying it's a very impressive resume and thank you so much for applying. You know, I see that you have some fantastic experience specifically in, on committees in the past. You know, from this experience that you have, what strengths would you like to bring to the school committee here?
Yeah. You know, I've served, I'm serving as a board member for NSW ASI as a treasurer. So specifically, I think I have a really excellent background around, you know, leading people and sort of working together with folks who are responsible about financial fiduciary. That's the skill I would bring. And the other one is specifically in really crafting and implementing new policies to help develop really good programs.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? A question? All right. Thank you so much for joining us. And like I mentioned, we'll be making the appointment next week. All right, we've got Estelle Jordan next. This is just like the school committee, the school spirit?
Yes, that's exactly it.
All right, Estelle, thank you for joining us. Thank you for applying and, you know, like with the others, we'll give you three minutes here to just tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right, good evening. My name is Estelle Jordan. I live in 756 Long Meadow Street. I'm a mother of one year old and a three year old. I'm a wife, I'm a veteran, and I'm still in the military service in the Air National Guard. I'm applying for this position because I'm inspired by my mother-in-law. My husband and my two brother-in-laws grew up in town. Unfortunately, one of my brother-in-laws has cerebral palsy. And my mother-in-law went through the school system and they got the right resources and the support they needed. And he was able to graduate at Long Meadow High and even get an associate's degree. So it's really impressive, the quality of education system we have here in this town. And I want to continue that legacy. And moreover, I care about my children's future. I'm representing hopefully all the working mothers in this town and young mothers. And I really care about, you know, what's going to happen to the middle school and forward because it will impact my kids. Also, I'm a first generation Korean American and first one in the family to go to undergrad and graduate degree. So I understand the transformative power of education. And therefore, I want to continue enhancing and maintaining quality of education here in Long Meadow School System. Briefly, some of the qualifications I have, I have a long history of public service, not just military. And specifically in the military realm, I served as a Yale lecturer for Department of the Air Force ROTC. So I have a long history of training and educating about over several thousand of students. So I'm very familiar what it's like to mentor and tutor a lot of college kids and what kind of quality of students that a lot of these school college admissions look for. And moreover, I am, while I'm still in military service, I work in cybersecurity and I serve with Veneet in the fiber task force. And I understand the, recognize the importance of technological resources that our students need and potential for a lot of innovation. However, I equally understand that there is a great threat as well. So other, I guess qualification, I'm pretty good at conflict management. I know there are a lot of contentious topics go on, especially when you come to this committee. And I have long history of understanding, making the right, not the right choices, but what is best needed for the town or I guess with my job for the mission in the Air Force. So I'm comfortable making tough decisions, even though sometimes it's not easy. And the contribution I can make is diversity. I am, as you can see, I'm Asian American, but also I'm first generation. And I know there are a lot of small groups of families here are also first generation. And especially there are a lot of military families, I think a lot of people recognize. And with military families, they have a lot of specific resources that they need that I could really help them. And of course, as I mentioned before, a lot of young working mothers and especially remote work that we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Estelle. All right. Questions, Adam?
Well, first of all, thank you for applying. Thank you for your service in this country. I hope I'm not taking low hanging fruit from anybody else, but you know, just having this wealth of experience, what do you see in the coming years as the role of artificial intelligence in education in Long Meadow?
I think the big thing is that I know with a lot of people where ChatGPT will, is kind of like a cheating system, you know, AI can do your homework, AI can do all of that. And on a long term, I see AI as something that we use as like an Excel spreadsheet where it's kind of an aid to our studies. It should not be a primary use for, to get immediate answers. Our students still should understand how to think critically and AI should be used as a resource to that. One of the things I, me and my colleagues always talk about is using ChatGPT as if you want to know a different solution than what you have initially came up with yourself initially. But that should not be the primary solution because AI does not, it does not lead you always to the right answer. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh?
I know Long Meadow, we have children with various needs and abilities. From my perspective, I think the town works really hard to accommodate both by law and just by being the right thing to do. In your experience, I know your kids aren't at school age yet, but have you, do you have any particular places do you think the town could do better on or should focus on more?
I know, as I mentioned, there are a lot of military families here. And I know one of my colleagues, her kid is still waiting on, I don't know, special needs plans and education from the town, from the school system. I mean, to be honest, I don't know the whole process. I understand a lot of government and all of that. The process takes forever and of course, it includes paperwork. On top of that, I also dealt with my son. He needed speech therapy and that took forever. I can't give you specifically on how does that really work, but what I could say is that I definitely have the time and I definitely want to be the voice and advocate for those families because I care, you know, just like my neighbor Sarah. I know she has a lot of experience on that too, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Nicole?
Thank you again for coming forward. It's great to have so many volunteers for the position. I'm wondering if you can speak to how your experience both in the community, but also professionally has shaped your understanding of the role of the committee and what that work could do to support these students and schools of Long Meadow?
I'm assuming the school committee, correct?
Yes.
So right now, just briefly working in the task force, I've got a gain, fiber task force. I gained understanding of that there needs to be specific, sorry, there needs to be a lot of time and dedication that needs to be done to come up with best solution. And I also understand that, you know, a lot of voices needs to be heard from residents. It's a lot of making sure you reach out to community and you hear their concerns. I'm assuming that's what the school committee is. I honestly don't know what the full expectation is, but I do know that being part of the committee, you need to make sure that you hear the local, like the parents and, you know, some, even though the topic might be controversial, you need to make sure that you take the time to understand and even study and do the research. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Stella. Is there anything from your professional, the professional part of your career, whether it's the military or cyber knowledge, cybersecurity, that you'd like to see brought, brought to the school and the school department or that you think you can uniquely bring to them?
I think, I think it'll be interesting to know a little bit more about if there is a like computer science or like a tech class. I know when I was younger, we had like a class how to type a keyboard. I don't know if that's still a thing. But I think there, I really would like to see an education on how to be better informed about threats on the internet. Because as you all know, there are a lot of misinformation and I have extensive experience on that, working against certain cyber missions on it. But just understanding students to seek truth and know what the truth is, is really important and not be distracted by, you know, false information or something that initially and quickly like, you know, satisfy, you know, whatever they think they first saw, like cute pictures of puppies or, you know.
Can I just follow up? This has nothing to do with anything, but I'm just interested about your opinion about cell phones in the schools.
Oh. Cell phones in schools. I think, gosh, it's so hard to say. I think we can't deny the fact that cell phones, well, I don't think we could really take away from it, I think. I don't know what the issue is, right? Like when I was in high school, like I had a cellphone on my phone and I like looked at it when teacher was, you know, teaching, you know? I think it's, the generation needs to understand that, hey, it's an etiquette thing, you know? There's a time and place to have your phone and there's a time and place for you to pay attention. And I think, you know, having a cellphone is, you know, your right, but it should be utilized in a matter of respect and also etiquette. And if, I don't know the issue, but if the teacher says like no cellphone in class, then you know, then the student should be respectful of that. And it should be used for emergency use. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, clearly have young kids.
I mean, hey, you know, things are changing. People will know what it is in the future.
All right, we've got space for one more question if anyone wants to ask. Okay, all right, thank you so much, Estelle. Appreciate it.
We're gonna keep the clapping going.
Uh, next up is Gina Fast. Is Gina with us? No, not on Zoom, okay. Uh, and then Gina's not with us, then we'll move on to Georgia, Robert. Hi, Georgia, thank you for joining us, thank you for applying. Um, and like everyone else, you can start off with three minutes to introduce yourself.
Okay, great. Um, so Georgia Robert, Indian on Hazardville Road. This is, uh, my twenty-sixth year in education. Um, I taught for eight years in Massachusetts, um, and then the rest of my career in Connecticut. Taught, uh, middle school, high school, English for many, many years, department head of English departments in Ellington as well as Simsbury. And now I serve as an assistant principal, uh, for Simsbury High School. Um, recently, I'd say the last eight years, I have been very fortunate to be part of the committee in Simsbury that sets the strategic planning goal for five years at a time. I really enjoy that work, um, enjoy, um, having a voice in, uh, what the goals are gonna look like, um, carrying out that work at the building level. So, um, that's one of the reasons that I, uh, threw in an application and you see me here today. Um, I have two sons at the high school. They, uh, went to Wolf Swamp Road School. I moved here for the schools, basically, my husband and I. And, um, our kids have had a, a great time in the school system. Um, I have a senior and a freshman. Um, I am an active music mom. Um, my senior has been involved since fourth grade. Um, and, uh, both children have played three sports. Um, so I'm an active sports parent as well. Um, another thing I wanted to highlight is just the, the volunteerism I've been doing as a board member. Um, it's now breakthrough T U N D, but it used to be J D R F. Um, so I worked with J D R F in recent years, the Connecticut Western Mass chapter. Um, one of the things that's really important to me is having a very healthy collaborative board and, um, you know, working together and sort of providing that united front. Um, and I think that's something I would love, um, to be able to contribute to the school committee as well.
Great, thank you so much. Um, anyone wanna, Adam, go ahead.
You know, thank you so much for coming out. Um, again, another impressive, uh, resume, it makes me feel like I need to do more on my resume. But, uh, you know, it seems like you have a, a very unique intersection here where you have both, uh, significant professional experience, um, you know, especially, uh, uh, in the, the secondary education, uh, arena and you're, you're a parent here. So, you know, seeing, um, you know, how things are, are working in, uh, in Long Meadow, you know, comparing your, your professional opinions to, to what you're seeing with, uh, your, your children's education. Uh, you know, you, for your time on the committee, do you have any goals of anything you'd like to, to see improved? Or areas you think you could be helpful?
Um, I, I do, I mean, a couple of things on my mind would be, um, I mean, something as small as Chromebook insurance or some sort of kind of sustainability, um, initiative with the Chromebook program. Um, pay to play sports, that's something I, I do hear a lot as an active, uh, you know, in many parent circles. So I, I would love to be involved in, and I know that's, I know that's on the committee's mind. I've, I've seen that reflected in the meetings. Um, but I would love to be a part of, I guess, smoothing that out. Not that it necessarily needs to go away, but just what does it look like in other places? Um, and, and how do you do your best to make it as equitable as you can? And also, um, you know, I'm, I'm really excited about the middle school. One of the things about me wanting to serve in this role at some point was, it was very important to me that I do it at a time that my, you know, I almost like have one foot out the door with my senior and I've got the freshman. Um, I've enjoyed my time collaborating, you know, at the town level the most when I sort of did not like have a horse in the race. So a good example of that would be coming out in community forums when, uh, redistricting was happening. You know, we're Wolf Swamp, it wasn't gonna affect us, but I enjoyed being part of that process. I also came out when the ARCTEX were here on that middle school planning night, um, participated in that workshop. Again, you know, that my son will be graduating when the middle school is built, hopefully. Um, and so I like that I can kind of have that level-headed approach where I'm, I'm super invested. And I know how important it is to keep the school system functioning is one of the best in Western Mass and highly excellent. You know, it's kind of what keeps our home values where they are, um, and all of that great stuff. But I, I do feel like I, um, I have the right vantage point at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
So you have a great wealth of experience as a teacher and administrator. And, um, now you're thought, you might be on the school committee side of things. So I was just wondering, you know, you've worked with many different school committees in different districts, I, I see. And your, what are your observations of what, uh, made those good examples perhaps of school committees work well? And what are some things that in your experience you saw school committees could have done better or could have been, uh, done to make, become more effective essentially? So what's your view of a school, of the school committees that you worked with on the other side, basically?
Um, two big points. One is I think that, you know, the health of the, of the committee, you know? As someone who is in an administrative role, say I were going to consider moving to another district. You, you do pay attention, you want to make sure how stable is the school committee? What are, you know, what is the climate like on the school committee? Because, you know, there are some towns in the area where people stay, they do stay away from applying to those towns in particular, just because of the volatility, um, on those boards. So I do think that, you know, that, that calm, calm on the surface, but you're swimming underneath is very important. And, um, have, developing strong relationships with everyone on the committee is very important. And then the other part is, you know, I, I do work in education all day. Like I'm not, I'm not on the school committee to talk about examples that, you know, how my school does it, you know? If, once in a while, if someone is asking or curious or hey, could you find out what some other schools, uh, schools in the Farmington Valley are doing? Sure, but essentially, you know, the school committee is to set policy, the school committee is to develop the budget. There's nothing more important than funding, you know, when it comes to running a school system. So I see the purpose as, you know, setting the policy, listening to the community, um, filtering through difficult, you know, comments and tough times and, uh, most importantly, developing a very strong budget.
Great, thank you. Nicole?
Uh, thank you for coming out tonight also. Um, just to kind of build off of that idea of school committee as an educator. Um, several of us are also educators, so I'm curious, um, what are your thoughts about how school committees can sort of best support the work of the school district? How we can best support the continued progress that our district is working towards on improving equitable, um, and, um, inclusive spaces for all of our students?
Um, you know, I, I, I think the vision of the graduate and, um, some of the long range goals and, and the vision that the school system has, um, are very important. I think that, you know, the role of the school committee is definitely to listen. You know, a lot of times you probably are hearing from maybe families or situations where people do feel marginalized in some way, shape or form. Um, so listening to that, being responsive, you know, communicating with superintendent, um, and keeping those lines of communication, I think are very important. Um, I think it's important to be a very positive voice in the community as well and, um, making sure that the, the community, you know, I, I tease a lot of my friends, like you don't, you don't come to town meeting. You know, it's like, you, people don't always take advantage of all of the opportunities they have to be active. But, um, being responsive, listening and being clear, um, of what is happening behind the scenes. Cause I do find people, they don't, they don't all watch the meetings online, they're not always well informed. And they, they probably do need to hear more about what the various boards in towns are, are exploring in doing to, to make those changes happen for students.
Jane?
Yep, thank you for applying. Um, being one who sat in your seat before, I think back eight years ago, I had to sit here before the slot more to do the same thing. I appreciate where you're at. Um, but the question that we asked everybody was one that, uh, Mr. Gold had asked, I think earlier at Bizarrat. Um, is, you know, after these nine months, which you're gonna like blink and they're gonna be gone. You know, do you, is this a, you're just looking to do a stopgap? Are you really trying to participate in the committee longer term? Given you have a senior that's obviously gonna be transitioning and a ninth grader going to tenth. Is this something you're gonna look to continue or is this just, hey, we'll get you guys by for the next nine months? And, you know, then whoever gets elected is in.
Um, it, it's, it's something I'm looking to continue. I mean, one of the questions I always have is just, um, as some of the other candidates mentioned, that work-life balance. And, you know, being that I am in a school system, you know, that's one of the questions for me is more what subcommittee assignment, you know, if this were to work out, what subcommittee assignment would I get? How would I be able to sort of manage that piece of it? Um, but yes, that's been on my mind to continue that. Um, and I see it as something, you know, that I, I would potentially want to do a bit longer. I, I really enjoy this. I think it's just the, sort of the educational nerdy side of me that enjoys committees a little too much.
Great, thank you. Josh?
So on the middle school building committee, we have discussed, uh, a number of things on how to maybe alleviate some traffic concerns. One of the things we talked about, uh, and not in any, any sort of detail, is having staggered start times or different, start times for different grades. And I was just curious about your, uh, when you were on the committee that was exploring a later start time, just wanted to hear about your experience with that.
Um, that, yeah, that was a great opportunity. Again, it was another opportunity where I truly was open-minded on that topic. Um, uh, but I had studied it the year before, uh, with Simsbury. So we had gone through a year-long, um, committee with all stakeholders involved that had looked at it. I was, and still am open to it. I do think it works best when the surrounding towns want to move at the same time. You know, so say for example, you know, it, it can be a challenge for a high school to do it on their own. But if sort of the neighboring towns, the towns that you tend to play in sports or in the conference are considering it at the same time, um, then I think that tends to work well. But it was definitely, you know, a positive, it was a positive experience. I think people were educated on it, explored the topic. Um, I think it was given its sort of due course in the committee.
We have space for one more question, if anyone has one? Okay, if not, I'll, oh, go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. Uh, thank you again for applying. Um, you brought up a point earlier, um, on pay to play for athletics in town. And, um, as a volunteer coach myself, I get a lot of, um, you know, questions and, you know, why is my, why do we have to pay for my kid to play? Um, there's booster clubs involved and I've talked to some of the members of the school committee in the past. And Mr. Hench has done a, a good job on this topic for several years now. But I'm just curious if you have any initial thoughts, um, or suggestions, um, around this topic?
Um, well, it does add up very quickly. It, it does add up. Um, and I, I, I do worry about people who may want, may not want to come forward. Is there a process for, you know, how easy are we making it? Maybe when parents do need help, that's one of the questions that I've had, I've had conversations with families, um, to kind of say, I don't, I don't know that there is a clear process, but you certainly could start by reaching out to the athletic director if that is a concern. Um, I would just like to see a balance found and maybe transparency so that the community understands how it works. You know, I've, I've had that question asked of me just because of what I do. Like, hey, do you know if the money is going back to the general education fund? Or is it, is that specific money being allocated to that specific sport? So I think some transparency around, you know, what it is, why we have it, how it's functioning. And even if it's just goals to move to a lower pay to pay fee. You know, that it's, the school committee doesn't have to solve the problem immediately, but you know, is there, is there a plan to work towards bringing that fee down for families? Or maybe, um, lowering the, the cap for the family? I think that would be, uh, a very tangible step as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for joining us, Georgia. That was six questions, we hit the limit, so thank you and we'll be making the appointment next Tuesday.
Wonderful, okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much, great. All right, uh, now we.
We clap first.
Oh, yeah. All right, um, now we have space for discussion amongst the select board and school committee. If you all would like to make any comments or say anything about this process or any applicants?
This is gonna be really tough.
Yeah?
Yeah.
An embarrassment of riches was a nice way to put it.
Yeah, seriously.
Well, I'm actually very curious to learn what each of you might think would be, like you would be very happy to see, like a, on, a skill or a focus that maybe your current board is lacking or could be stronger in some particular topic? Or, I, I think, I'm sure the five of us are interested in learning what you guys think are the, are good qualities, basically, to focus on essentially.
Anybody want to jump in? Go for it.
Yeah.
You can take it.
What happened? So number one, everybody I thought did a really fan- fantastic job and have some incredible resonances. I mean, from my, my vantage point from a school committee member and from, wow, I think the more diversity of thought and the different perspectives are very important to me whenever I think about it. The fact that we have the physician, we have many great, you know, educators on board. We've had business people on board to really give kind of a very differing perspective. Cause remember, we're, we're not supposed to be getting involved in how to actually administer it. We're just supposed to be seeing it from a higher level. Um, so that is important to me. So, you know, you know, and I didn't, hopefully I don't pronounce her name wrong, Estella or Stella?
Estelle.
Estelle, sorry, I apologize. But that, that was interesting. I mean, to, to come from a military, so I don't think I've ever been on a committee with somebody who's served. You know, and, you know, you have to kind of sit back and go, somebody who's willing to serve in that capacity is willing to jump in. That'd be a very differing perspective, that's interesting. Um, but obviously Georgia, you know, and, and, and others, you know, have this, you know, education background that is invaluable. You could, you, you can see it and some of them have so much information and probably could do a really great job of filling in some of the gaps that we have within our committee that have, you know, you either transitioned out from a curriculum or whatever it may be. But from my vantage point, that would be, hey, you know, do they fill, like kind of backfill what we need, which is more diversity with, from, and I'm not, I'm talking diversity within the school of thought. Where do they come from? Are they coming from, you know, certain education versus in, you know, an educator's education versus a business person versus the US Air Force? That's very different. I kind of like that. I think it's good for our students too, because sometimes in Long Meadow, um, you know, I think Bill LaPlante came in a number of years ago and he gave a really great perspective, right? He comes from the construction side of things and, you know, sometimes we as, you know, you know, parents in Long Meadow, we kind of poo-poo that air, that trade, you know, but that trade is valuable, you know? There's, you know, there's great people in that trade, you know? Same thing, you know, with serving our country, you know? We had one of the best, um, you know, gentleman who was a part of our committee, being one of our students, who's at West Point right now, who went that route and he was amazing. Um, and he was a great person. Somebody, you know, like that being on here would be very interesting to me as well. So to provide that perspective to our students, so. That's kind of my quick sense, but everybody did a great job. I remember how nerve-wracking it was whenever we were up there. I think we had seven people whenever we did and it was just one after another, after another. Um, but, you know, and I, I get that it's nerve-wracking and it's truly appreciated that everybody jumped in and, you know, was willing to step up. So, wish you could take all four of them.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask about the process. You know, I, I, I've gone through this, this is the sixth time, I think, appointment and this, this process is a little different and it doesn't mean it's, you know, anything other than different. But what's the process moving forward? I think, I'd like to understand it and I think the candidates would like to understand it, you know? And, and I'll, I'll tell you, you know, if the chair, you know, recognizes Adam to make a motion to appoint somebody that's very different from the, the previous process, which was, uh, a closed, blind vote through a, a reduction. And I don't know, Nicole, if you saw that, that process? And, and I don't, I don't know if one's better or not, but I just am asking what the process is gonna be.
Yeah, so we've had additional discussions about this, um, you know, when we decided to, when we taught, had this discussion about how to conduct this interview. We also briefly talked about the voting process and we did review, you know, I think you put that together back in two thousand and eleven. That had been used a few times, correct?
Like four or five times, right? Like, four or five times, right?
So, I think we are leaning towards doing something similar to that. Something that is more, um, system, you know, has more of a procedure, more of a system to it than how we do board, committee appointments with, with motions. Yeah, did you wanna add anything to that?
No.
Was that like what we did for the Middle School Building Committee? Where we had, it was almost like rank choice?
I was not on the board at that time, so I'm not-
So, you were watching? The answer, Josh, is it is different, because I was, the both. But this is, it's literally, everybody gets a piece of paper and we're not, but, but write down your, your choice. And then somebody just goes and says, ask everybody to vote. And if nobody gets a majority of the votes, a person or persons with the lowest votes drop or dropped off. And then, again, everybody, again, votes verbally for the, the choices. And eventually, and it shouldn't take more than one round, I think it never did, take more than two. Somebody ends up with, in our case, I guess it's gonna be six votes.
Yeah, and we'll send out a document this week-
Yep.
That outlines the voting's, um, structure.
Is this a, is this an opportunity for us to have an actual policy to, to put in place for these appointments? I mean, Mark, you mentioned we've done, I don't know, since your time, six at least. Shouldn't we have a policy that we can-
That policy was adopted by the school committee and the select board at the time. So, there was, I guess there is a policy. But since it's a select board poli, it's like any other policy. It's made to be superseded by whoever's in, in office at the time. So, I'm, I don't have a problem with policy being superseded, because I think the times changed.
But there is an existing policy.
It's an absolutely existing policy.
Our understanding is that there is not currently an existing policy. There's a document that lays out sort of what the common practice has been, but that there wasn't-
It was voted for by both, if you go back to the minutes, both the school committee and the select board adopted it as a policy. I know that, because I did it with Jennifer.
It does not live in our policy documents as of now. I'm not sure if it was removed in previous. Yeah.
I, I suspect what you're saying is true that it wasn't voted at the time. But it doesn't reside in our policy manual. But it's a good point that it's an opportunity to codify it more.
And then, and I think the, basically, the only real difference between the way that the interviews were conducted before and conducted tonight was just that every member asked a question of every applicant, where we didn't do that this time. Where it's just allowed folks to ask questions if they wanted to.
Specifically alternating between a school committee question and a select board one. And, and you're right, it's, questions all got asked, so it was fun.
Yeah, I feel like we worked well in the sandbox deal.
So, yeah, that was really the only difference. Yeah, go ahead, Michaela.
I just wanted to come back to when you were saying, Andrew, what might we be looking for as current school committee members? And again, it's really hard. Everybody was so, did such a great job, um, answering the questions and were so highly qualified. And there's one side where there's some different perspectives. Like Jamie said, it's really important to bring that. And it comes back to kind of what Georgia was saying. For me, it really hit was having a very healthy collaborative board and how important that is. Especially since September's almost over. So, it's kind of, I think, important for me as, like, I'm in my second year of my term. Things that, like, we're all hoping to accomplish, and I feel like we already have a collaborative board. To make sure we have somebody that can, like, come in and hit the ground running for the next nine months is important. And so, I think that's a priority for me.
Yeah, go ahead, go.
I would expand with that. You, you took the words right out of my mouth with the idea of hit the ground running, um, knowing that this is a short-term appointment and knowing that we have been. One of the things that I've said multiple times over the years since joining the board was that it has been an absolute pleasure and honor because of how well the group has worked together over the years. Not always bringing in different perspectives, different ideas, and yet finding a space to come together and have those discussions and work our way towards something that we can kind of all get behind has just been really important to us and has made us, I think, um, highly effective, which is really important. So, we have a lot of great perspectives, and I love that we had applicants that are focused on a variety of different things, um, from mental health to cybersecurity, um, to educational policy. Um, that, that is great to have so many different perspectives. And also, folks who have children of different ages is also always nice for us. Um, some of us have kids who are at the high school age and others who are younger kids. So, we get a broad view of where the district is and what's going on. Um, but that idea of being able to hit the ground running, for me, partly comes back to how strong of an understanding someone has, um, what the role of the school committee is and how the school committee can best support the work of the district. Um, so that was really something that I was focused on and concerned about as well.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, Andrew, I just, you know, my, my day job is a management consultant for nonprofit boards. And so, when people ask, how do you appoint someone to the board? The, the answer we give right along is you design the board for the organization you want to be, not the organization you are. And the example I'll use, because nobody here seems to be in that category, is if you're going into a building's, you know, area, maybe you wanna find somebody who's in the construction industry or who knows that. Now, none of these candidates were, so I can use that as an example. But it, it's really, design the board for the gaps and where you wanna go. Because if you design the, the board members for the skills you have, you're just gonna perpetuate what, what you're doing. So, that's kind of the professional answer.
Thank you. Great, thanks. Anything else on this? All right. Well, thank you all for joining us. Do you all need to close your meeting here?
We do, yes, absolutely. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation related to that?
Not I, so the-
We're seeing none. We'll move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yeah.
Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie? And yes for me as well. Thank you very much. We'll see you all next week.
Thank you for coming.
This has been fun. We should do this again.
Let's do it next week.
You wanna propose any friendly competitions?
Stay next week, correct. Don't forget, we start a little earlier than you guys do.
All right, thank you, guys. Okay, uh, now we are on to more interviews with board and committee interviews. So, we will begin with the capital planning committee. We've got three folks that have applied for the capital planning committee. We have Alexander Aiken, John Skypek, and Ira Smolowitz.
Ira.
Or Ira, sorry.
So, Ira and Alex are both in attendance. And, uh, John, Mr. Skypek is gonna be postponed to another meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, I'm gonna move Alex and Ira both in.
All right, Alex, thank you for joining us. Since you're on here first, we'll start with you. If you could just start with your name, address, and just let us know a little bit about why you applied for the capital planning committee.
Uh, Alex Aiken, uh, 207 Coventry Lane. I am actually reapplying, because I've been on it for the last couple of years. And, yeah, I've been in Long Meadow for, like, five years now. And a couple of years into it, I was able to join this and really enjoy being part of the community. This is kind of my first step into joining the community, getting a part of it and being part of this committee. So, I wanted to continue to do this as I, I, I see stuff that can still be done. And I wanna continue with what I've been doing for the last couple of years.
Great, thank you so much. And, um, Ira, if you can also just start with your name, address, and why you're applying for the capital planning committee?
Ira?
Yes, uh, excuse me, Ira Smolowitz, 196 Meadowlock Drive. I've been on the committee a number of years now, and I very much enjoy the committee. I feel satisfied that I'm making an input, and I would like to continue with that trend.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Uh, Mark?
Yeah, I'll ask them both, and they can ask, answer one at a time, Alex and then Ira. What works and what doesn't work?
Having more money works, but, uh, that's not it. It, it, having all of us kind of, um, work together, having four or five people all looking at different ideas in the budget. It's like we all kind of have different opinions of what, what we like to see and what we find important. And it kind of allows us to kind of all sit together and, and make a decision on what we feel is best for the community, coming from different aspects.
I've taught, uh, capital budgeting at the NVA level. And one of the ways of doing this is to take the output, which is the cost, and over, over time, show the input of the benefits discounted at the cost of capital and see if the benefits exceed the cost. Now, if we have a request for a fire truck or an ambulance and so on, it's obvious that the cost is there, but the benefits are almost infinite, so we get approval. But on the other hand, if you want a, a new tractor, it would be useful if we could have, show us how much more efficient the new tractor is compared to the old. How much we will save in gasoline, manpower, and so on, and we can somehow discount that. That would be helpful. Not, not a hundred percent mandatory, but certainly helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, that was quick. Thank you both for joining us. We'll be voting on your appointment at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got the Conservation Commission, Richard McCullough and Lawrence Kubera.
I don't believe Lawrence is here.
Okay. Thanks for joining us, Richard. If you could start with your name, address, and tell us a little bit about why you applied.
Sure. Rick McCullough, uh, live at 281 Conover Street. So, I've grown up in town, uh, along with my wife. And, uh, you know, we have fifteen-year-old twins here in, in town. And, uh, uh, you know, I have a long history as a, a family in this town. My dad actually was a builder and developer, uh, starting in the sixties. He built and developed all the way through up till two, 2000, and I took over for him at that point in time. So, I grew up in the luxury residential construction in town and surrounding communities. You know, so, I don't know, it, it may not seem like the natural, uh, fit for me, but, or, uh, but I've always, you know, appreciated going in front of conservation. I've gone, I, in front of it plenty of times in Long Meadow in the past, and summers more in recent years. And I've always had an appreciation for, for conservation and protection of the wetlands. Currently, I'm not a builder, uh, per se. I still have a license, uh, but I've been a Realtor for 24 years, and I've transitioned full-time to that. And so, you know, I spend a lot of time talking about the wonders, wonderful things about Long Meadow, um, between the school system, the sidewalk system, and of course, how we protect, uh, the town and, you know, Bliss Park, Turner Park, the meadows. So, uh, I, I think I have an interesting perspective. You know, like I said, not, might not be the most, what you would figure as, you know, I don't have any background in conservation and that sort of thing. But I hold an appreciation from the other side. And, um, I have a, you know, curiosity to do that. And, uh, don't have really any experience with boards or commissions, um, from that perspective. But, uh, no, I'd like to, to build on my knowledge, my background. And I think anyone who, if I was ever on that commission, um, I would have that unique ability to, uh, you know, see it from the other side as well.
Great, thank you. Josh?
Uh, Rick, from my experience, nobody knows more about wetlands law than builders, so I got, I got you there. Uh, do you have any client and clients in Long Meadow as a Realtor that may lead to a conflict with the board?
Hmm, no, no.
So, I guess if you did, if you had a client who said, I, I wanna hire you, uh, I wanna buy this house, but I know it has a wetland issue, uh, you're prepared to, say I have a conflict? Either recuse yourself from the board or turn down that client?
Uh, I think I would recuse myself first. Yeah, uh, no, I, I, uh, I would have no problem with that. You know, I like to think that I can think from a central point of view, and I, I would be able to recognize an obvious conflict. Uh, I haven't had something like that yet, uh, where I've brought people, you know, uh, or helped people with conservation, uh...
Well, Long Meadow doesn't have that much of an issue as, as other towns.
Right, right, right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Mr. McCullough, have you, have you spoken to anybody on the Conservation Commission right now to kind of get a sense of what you're getting yourself into?
Well, I don't know what I'm getting myself into, but I, I talked to John Breznerhand, uh, a few months ago. Uh, there was something that happened in a house that I built, uh, almost 20 years ago in Pendleton. Uh, something where there, there was a washout and, uh, and, uh, so I was called in to kind of help facilitate, uh, getting Stephen Roberts involved and, and remediating the issue. And, you know, we were talking a little bit, and I said, hey, this is something that, you know, I, I wouldn't mind being on conservation. He said, we have an opening. Yeah, so-
Thank you.
It has, it has, uh, come up, and that's kind of where I started, I think. And, and not only that, but before that, you know, playing with the idea of it, you know?
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, great. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, and we'll vote on your appointment at our next meeting. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, next up, we have the Council on Aging, two folks.
I believe we're also gonna be postponing those.
Postponing those, okay.
For the possibility that they would attend via Zoom, but with connection issues on vacation, they might not have access.
Okay, sounds good. All right, next up, Historical Commission, three folks on the agenda. Do we have them?
Yes.
All right.
So, we have Margaret Cohen, right?
Yep.
And then Greg Morrison and Brett Lukasek are both on Zoom.
Perfect.
And just so everyone's clear, Margaret and Brett are both applying for reappointment. Greg would be a new appointment.
Okay, great. Margaret, we'll start with you since you're in person. Can you start off with just your name, address, and tell us about why you're seeking reappointment?
Uh, I'm Margaret Cohen, C-O-H-N, and I live at 66 Woodland Road. Thank you for this opportunity. I've been a dedicated member of the Historical Commission since 2014. We have accomplished a number of fruitful tasks, including surveys and documentation of the barns of Long Meadow, houses built before 1901, and supporting the rehabilitation of the Brewer Young Mansion. We continue to monitor the street projects that take place in historic districts and comment when asked about other projects that, while not affecting specific historical structures, may have an impact on the historical appearance and environment of the town. We are blessed to live in a beautiful, historically significant town in Massachusetts. However, this does not happen magically or without the care and attention of generations of concerned and involved citizens. Projects and tasks are constantly arising in the natural order of town life and need to be attended to by people who make the decision to devote their energy and knowledge to maintaining the historical appearance and semi-rural environment that has made Long Meadow a very desirable place within which to make a home. Our commission is down several members, so I would like to take this opportunity to appeal to members of our community to consider joining our group and help continue our mission to identify, preserve, educate, and advise our town about our unique heritage. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today.
Great, thank you so much. And we'll move over to Brett to introduce herself and explain why you're, uh, sorry, name, address, and explain why you're seeking reappointment.
Sure. Uh, my name is Brett Lukasek, 38 Crescent Road. And, um, I love history, and I love the old houses in this community. And I feel I wanna be a part of, of keeping things there and, you know, exploring opportunities for, uh, restoration or helping people, like, with construction. I, I've restored a couple of homes myself, and, um, so just wanna be a part of it.
Great, thank you. And Greg, you're seeking appointment for the first time. If you could start with your name, address, and, uh, talk a little bit about why you're seeking this appointment.
Sure, thank you. And my name is Greg Morrison. I live at 98 Alington Street. And my family and I moved to Long Meadow a year ago. I'm a store preservation consultant and architect for a firm based in Memphis, Tennessee. And I've been involved in store preservation since I was a teenager in the Northeast. But now, most- But now, most of the work I do is in Tennessee. And I'm just interested in getting sort of back into the conservation world up here and specifically in Long Meadow. There's a lot of really great inventory here. I think it's fascinating that, like, we have so much focus on the 18th century architecture, but like now, more and more houses are coming of age and having deal with the historical aspect of like mid-century houses and all that. That's going to be a fun thing to see how that all unfolds and just want to contribute what I can on that front.
Great, thank you. Margaret, look at this, you made an appeal. Worked like that. All right, any questions from the board for these folks? Mark?
I don't have any questions, but I think, Margaret, since you're the, one of the senior members of the group, maybe you can just take a second and explain, because this always comes up, the difference between the Historic Commission, Historical Commission, the Historic District Commission, and, right, and the Historic Society.
Okay. The Historical Society is a private organization. It's not, although it's focused on Long Meadow, it's not part of the town government. They have a little more freedom to act as they wish. The Historical Commission is part of the town government, one of the committees of the town. And we have more of an overview process. We, we don't have any money unless we apply to some organization or get a grant. Although I think we have $50 in postage, we're allowed. But we more, our mission is to identify, preserve, educate, and advise the town about our unique heritage. The Historic District Commission focuses specifically on the historic district in the center of town, around the green and all the homes there. And they have a little more clout in that district in that they can tell people specifically how to handle the appearance of their homes, what to do if they want to do some building or renovation, things like that.
Any other questions?
I was a part of the Historic District Commission as well, but I think I'm aged out. We've only allowed so much time. And I find it a really interesting, important place to be. And I think we are both working as Historic Commission and Historic District Commission to help preserve Long Meadow, you know, the historic areas of Long Meadow, both are important.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else from the board? All right, great. Thank you all so much for joining us. Appreciate you applying and you'll hear from us after our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and last, we've got Parks and Rec Commission. We've got William Welch and Alexandra Strom.
Alexandra is on the Zoom.
Okay, perfect. All right, since we've got you here in front of us, if you could start off, that'd be great. Name, address, and a little bit about why you're applying.
My name is William Welch and I live at 25 Meadowbrook Road. I'm interested in the Parks and Recreation Committee because first, I'm a firm believer in public service and giving back to the community. Did two terms with the Finance Committee and did not seek reappointment because I wanted to explore other committees and other sort of aspects and sectors of the town. Parks and Recreation seemed interesting to me because I think it's at a bit of a inflection point in terms of some of the projects that it will have to consider in the next couple of years. There's the middle school project, there's Bliss Park, there is the sort of normal infrastructure issues that go along with the Parks and Recreation resources. And then finally, there is the townwide survey that, you know, we need to act upon. So for me, it seems to pose a number of interesting and challenging issues for which I feel like I have a skill set that will add value.
Great, thank you so much. And Alexandra?
Hi, it's Sandra Strom, 678 Converse Street. Sorry, were you going to say something?
Oh, sorry, no, I think you knew what you're doing. Just a little bit about why you're applying.
Yes, so I, I've lived in Long Meadow for the last two and a half years. I lived in Glastonbury, Connecticut before that. And I have young kids. So I have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old who's a second grader at Blueberry. And my four-year-old daughter is in the, in preschool at Greenwood. And so she's been in Greenwood for the last two and a half years. And as a Long Meadow family, we use a lot of the parks and we use a lot of the open space and we use a lot of trails. It's one of our favorite things to do, the four of us. And I really love the resources that we have. And I think that this is a place where I can bring some perspective as this type of user to the committee. And I think it's important that we kind of, you know, shepherd all the resources that we have in town into where we're going, I guess. I have a little bit about me. I am a chemistry professor at Smith College. I heard about the position being available from Andrew Berkey, who works in my, in the same department with me, who's on the commission. And my kids do the, like soccer, the sports and stuff. And I know that the parks have something to do with that as well.
Great, thank you so much. Questions from the board, Josh?
Just a general question for both of you. Have you read the report that followed that survey you mentioned last year with our inventory in town and what parks and ideas we may have? And then a specific question, do you have any thoughts on what we should do with the Bliss Court, Bliss Park tennis courts? Which I was recently, I recently found out how much we spend on a year. I was a little disturbed, so, so two-part question.
I'm happy to go first, or if you would like to go first. So I did read the report and there were things in there that weren't surprising. There were other things that surprised me a little bit based on what I would say as things that I hear anecdotally from residents as opposed to the comments, the thoughts that get captured in the survey. I continue to think surveys are valuable, but they always don't seem to get the full picture, I think, from the residents. But there were things in there, for example, one issue in particular that I have chosen to act on and I felt that the survey was helpful in that regard. As to the clay courts, I actually happened to be, I just wanted to observe a Park and Recreation Committee meeting. I was actually at the meeting two weeks ago and that was one of the topics that came up. I think my initial thought, without knowing more, is that the status quo can't continue. And that's really driven by usage from an anecdotal perspective. But what was interesting about the conversation that was occurring within the committee were the ways by which they want to try to capture in a more data-driven way, usage on the courts. And I think my anecdotal experience is one that is shared by many people. They just don't seem like they get used. And therefore, I do think that's going to push a lot of public opinion or sentiment as to ultimately how you decide the issue. But without knowing more, the issue of cost did not come up. Without knowing more, that's my preliminary view of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alexandra, did you want to chime in on that?
Sure, I think that, you know, our, our town has limited amounts of space and I think that we should use the space that we have effectively for the needs that we have now. We go to Bliss Park all the time as a family and I don't think I've ever seen anyone using those courts. And I think that it's such a central location where there's so many possible uses for that. I think we would have to find out more about what people want to do with that specifically. And you have to pay attention to the cost. But it does seem like a pretty high-cost feature of, of a park that can certainly use attention in other areas specifically with the, like, playground equipment there. I think that another, I guess I'll just leave it there. You can ask further questions if you want to.
And have you read the report that was produced last year?
Oh, yes, sorry. I read that report when it came out and I wasn't thinking that I would get involved in the committee at the time. And so I haven't gone back to read over it. I think at that point, we weren't sure what was going to happen with the pool. And so I remember the, the pool at Bliss Park, or Reynolds Pool, I think it's called, being closed was a big part of people, people's concerns. But I'd have to review it further.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, Mark?
Mr. Strom, you mentioned the cost in your, you know, response a little bit. So I guess I'd like to ask you first and then Mr. Wells a little bit. How, how do you believe the Parks and Rec Department can help fund some of the, or get funding for some of the things that needs to be done, whether it's through, you know, town funding or called creative funding? Is there any thoughts that you may have on that?
Yeah, so in my role as a professor, I apply for a lot of federal grants to fund my research. Smith College is an undergraduate institution, but we have an active research program. And so writing grants is a very important skill. And I think getting funds, either state or federal funds, I'm not sure we apply for, we can apply for every type of Parks grant in Massachusetts due to the size of the town. But I think that looking for sources of funding outside the town can, will be a lot more popular than chipping away at our budget or raising taxes when we're already getting close to the maximum we can get to there. I also think that having models of local businesses funding things like athletic teams for youth sports and other ways to bring in some revenue streams for the programs that we do run as a town. Having, you know, the name of a business on the back of a kid's T-shirt is a pretty low, it's not like NASCAR-sized advertisements, right? And those types of creative, sort of in-kind and monetary donations can be very helpful with keeping our budget up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am familiar with a number of the different sources of revenue that I think the town currently, you know, seeks on behalf of Parks and Recs. I know they do a good job of trying to identify grants. I know that they implemented the advertising policy on the fields. And I know that they wish more money would be coming in than has come in. And I know that a number of the youth associations do try to get corporate sponsors for a number of the different teams. One idea that I actually have been thinking about, one that would be more privately driven, but I have thought about whether or not there's an opportunity for what I would call, you know, the Parks and Recreation Community, meaning the families and those who support the different youth associations, start something akin to LEAF, which is a nonprofit that, as you know, supports the school system. It strikes me that there is an opportunity, there's a need, and I suspect there's a desire to do something similar on the athletic side. So that is one thought that I've had as it relates to funding sources and, you know, I think the sort of extreme position that we're in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you so much, both of you, for applying and for joining us tonight. And you'll hear from us after our next meeting.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have the Board of Registars vacancy appointment. The Republican Town Committee presented a new nominee, Tracy DiMarco, to be on the Board of Registars. I believe that this actually, conversation is time-sensitive, right? We have to make this appointment tonight?
Correct, I believe so.
Okay, yeah. So now that we have a new nominee, any discussion from folks on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could, we got a letter from Stephen Kennedy and I just wanted to address it. So that, it said that, it pointed us to chapter MGL 51, section 15, which it urged us to follow it, which I believe we have been and I believe we will. But I just, what it says is, and I'll try to be brief, "When terms of the registrars expire, if there's a vacancy, the appointing authority, which is us, will appoint successors. So as nearly as possible, the members of the board shall represent the two leading political parties," as described in another chapter, "and then provided that a city or town clerk not, need not be enrolled and in no case shall an appointment be made to cause a board to have more than two members of the same political party, including the city or town clerk." And so what, the letter we got said that this was a, originally, I think the idea was that there were two of each, including the clerk was at that time, and 20 years ago when we, Board of Registars was first put in place, that the clerk was a Republican. And so there was, the Republican was, the clerk was a Republican and then there was a, one appointment as a Republican and two as Democrats. And so that means that the board has one Republican and two Democrat spots, the appointed board. I disagree with that reading and I, because, and I don't know what happened 20 years ago. Maybe there was a, well, actually, I should say 20 years ago, was the clerk elected?
Yes, Louise Lyons was in elected position.
So that, so that's...
So you're saying that he was basically just trying to make sure, they were trying to make sure there's, it's equal two and two?
They had to. And so we don't have elected clerks. So I think that this applies to towns where there's an elected clerk. We, I don't know if Tim's an elected in a party, it doesn't matter because we didn't, he wasn't elected. So I think that our duty under the statute is to make sure that we have as balanced as, as well as we can. So I'm, I'm not concerned that we're doing anything wrong, whatever we choose to do. But as I said at the last two meetings ago, I think that we should continue with our, our prior practices. You know, this is a, the Board of Registars is an important, incredibly important board in our current political climate. And so we have to have people that are, that we can trust and that are trustworthy because this is an important thing. I don't want us to have a town where things go haywire, especially this, this election. So, but I think we should consider our, our past practices and continue on with that.
Yeah, thank you. And what Josh is referring to is a resident letter that we received. I think everyone on the select board received that letter and so I...
Is that in our correspondence?
No, because it just came to the...
Over the weekend.
Over the weekend, yeah.
It wasn't put to select board.
But, no, but I thank you for that clarification and I agree with your reading of it and, and your interpretation of it as well. So, thank you. Go ahead.
I agree. I mean, I feel like it's, given the situation where there's an odd number, we, the practice that's been, been pursued over the many years is as equitable as you can be, basically, so.
Mark, did you have?
I agree with Josh's reading of, I went back today and looked at chapter 51, as he did. So I agree. We're doing the right thing and more folks say that we've been doing the right thing.
Yes. Yeah?
Yeah, I was just going to say, kind of like the appointment process, I think we need to, with the school committee appointment process, I think this is something that we should, moving forward, rather than we've always done it this way, we should actually have something, a policy in place. So when this comes up again, we actually have a policy, just like the appointments for the school committee. But I agree with everyone on Josh's comments and everyone on the board. But I think we should have a policy. So with that, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to appoint... So with that, I'll, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy DiMarco for the Board of Registars vacancy expiring March 31st, 2027.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? No? Okay. So with no further discussion, all those in favor? All right, great. So Tracey DiMarco has gotten the appointment, and now.
I'm right here.
Sorry, I didn't.
No, that's okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you, and congratulations. Okay, great. So we will now move on to a public hearing. So we have a public hearing. We have Good Energy here to present on our municipal aggregation final plan. So I'll give you guys a second. And we also have two folks from the Energy and Sustainability Committee, Doug Taylor and Bryant Miller. Thank you guys for joining.
Sorry.
We're seeing a lot of you lately.
Watch out what you ask for, you know.
Years ago, Michelle Moran's tried talking me into getting this stuff. I turned it down.
How could you miss this?
All right. Let me just share my screen on the Zoom so everyone's able to.
Okay, perfect.
See the presentation, but we should be good now.
Great, perfect. I assume you're from Good Energy?
I am, I am. Just want to make sure before we jump in, we only need to go to slide, I think, 13.
Okay.
And I'll grab anything from the appendix below that if we need it.
No, she's gonna start at the beginning.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll just go through 13.
But you can stop at 13.
All right, this was a packed agenda. Thanks for getting us on here. I'm Alice McNeil. I'm a client manager on the Good Energy team. We are the consultant that the town selected to develop the aggregation program. So tonight, I'll try to keep this short and tight. We're just gonna go through our draft plan. We've been developing this since the spring. The DPU process basically is that we need to have a draft plan, first of all, that the town is okay with, that has been publicly reviewed and commented on, and then it can be submitted for DPU review. The DPU has new guidelines out that should allow us, this just happened in July, so we don't know quite yet, but should allow us to get approval in 180 days, so that's really exciting in the DPU space. So, yeah, so at the end, we'll open this up to Q and A. I'll also put forth that some of the last slides, we're introducing our product selection options to bring to you all at your next meeting. We're hoping that you'll vote on this, so please feel free to ask any questions while I'm here.
Thank you.
Oh, great, thanks. So I just wanted to touch on, for everyone, what aggregation is. This program uses the collective power from the town residents and businesses to go out and select their own supplier. It's how any municipal aggregation works, except we're using residents and businesses. And we still use Eversource as all the delivery services, so that's billing, account maintenance, that's also wires and poles, store outage response. Those are all kind of the big players that Eversource provides. So in this program, the supplier that we select will actually provide the electricity, but everything else still comes from Eversource. So nothing really changes for anyone who participates. You still pay just one bill to Eversource at each month, and they make sure that our supplier gets paid. So just a little bit more about aggregation. I'm sure many of you know Massachusetts has a deregulated electricity market, which means you can choose who you want to supply your electricity. This graph is a little bit hard to see, but what it's supposed to show you is that municipal aggregation is kind of the green bars there. These are our rate classes, residential, commercial, and then like our, our low-income residential. These rate classes are already primarily on aggregation in the state. There's 170 cities and towns. We have over 65 of them at this point. So we have lots of consultants who are also working on these programs in the state and in New England. So nothing new, but very excited to get this up and going in Long Meadow. I'd also, oh, yeah, that's okay. That's okay. I also just want to talk about how this is different from third-party supply. I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions when we come to launch the program about this. But what's important here is that because the town is going out to negotiate with the supplier directly, we're able to get really good terms, which means you can participate, you cannot participate. You could decide to participate for a few months or for no months, and there's never a fee to join or leave the program. Also, hopefully competitive rates, and we have the opportunity to add additional recs to our own supply. I'd also just note that because Eversource is still running all the delivery services, things like low-income discounts, budget billing, and net metering, if you have solar on your home, are still calculated the exact same way. Nothing changes for them. Awesome, thanks. So just a little background before we get into the actual public hearing on the plan. So we met with the DOE, which is the Department of Energy Resources, earlier in August, and we gave them the rundown of our plan. Of course, they have best practices and principles that they reviewed with us, so we feel we're, we're well-equipped. And they gave us our kind of like consultation certificate, so they approve. And then actually, September 3rd, a few weeks ago, we started the public review, which basically just means the plan has been available. We've also done some other outreach to let people know how to review this plan, but ultimately, today's public hearing is probably the first people are really getting involved in this. But it is active on our program website, on the municipal site, and hard copies are also available. Awesome. So tonight, we'll do the public hearing. We'll take questions. Happy to take comments. We also have an online form that you can complete. Any resident can review this plan and submit questions and comments, and we will answer all of them. And if there's anything we need to incorporate into the plan, we'll make sure that happens. Once the town is satisfied, we will move to submit this to Department of Public Utilities. And then hopefully, in a quick 180-day turnaround, we have a program that we can take out to bid to select a supplier. All right. We jumped into the plan. So just an overview, we have three big goals of the program. The first is, of course, like the foundation of aggregation, which is using the bulk purchasing power of all of our residents and businesses to get good rates, select a qualified supplier. And the second bullet point here is to use that supplier to offer alternative electricity supply. This can be electricity supply that's just as whatever Source provides, which includes 62% renewable energy, all the way up to 100%. So we'll talk about some of those product options in a minute. And then the final goal is, of course, just to give people more options. They don't have to participate. We'll talk about volunteer participation later. But yes, so these are our goals going forward. Now we can look at what it will look like to actually participate in this program when it launches. We can go to lunch. That's okay. So the way we like to think about it is, when the program launches, Long Meadow Community Electricity will become Eversource's supply, the default supply. So if you were to move into town or come off of a third-party supplier, what would happen right now is you automatically get assigned Eversource. So if you either moved into town or came off of third-party supply at the time of launch, you'd be moved on to our program's aggregation. When we launch the program, everyone who is on Eversource for their supply, pretty much everyone has them for their delivery services, they're eligible, although eligible, to be automatically enrolled. They, of course, will have a 30-day consideration period. During this period, they'll be notified by letter, we'll have our public meetings. And then ultimately, they'll have a couple of different ways that they can choose to participate in the program or not participate in the program. For accessibility reasons, we have online versions via phone, as well as an opt-out card that we actually mail with the, with the letter, so people can opt out in a couple of different ways. And we try to attract a lot of attention around that period, have public meetings, attend select board meetings, to let people ask their questions. If anyone has already chosen their electricity supplier, so they have a third-party supplier, they're not eligible to be automatically enrolled, but they absolutely can participate, they just have to affirmatively decide that. And I'll just note again that Eversource, like nothing changes with accounts when we enroll them in a program. It just means at the very bottom of the bill, where we talk about supply, you'll see Long Meadow Community Electricity instead of Eversource, just as you would really any third-party supplier. Great. So we're gonna talk about two product suites. Some of our first consultations, it seems like we're leaning towards suite number one, but we'd like to talk about both of them, have you guys ask questions, and ultimately have you decide at your next meeting. So I'll just walk through suite number one. We have two product offerings. We, in this, in these types of programs, we have to have a default and optional products. The default product is, basically means anyone who would be eligible for automatic enrollment, that's the product they'll go into. And for suite number one, that's the Long Meadow Basic. It includes the exact amount of renewable energy that Eversource includes. And just to like break down what, what those percentages mean, the state has a renewable energy standard, it's called the RPS, that changes each year. And it's a good thing that we're increasing how much of electricity generation has to come from these renewable sources. There's lots of different classes within renewable energy, but for the sake of this, we're calling it 62% is their total for 2024. That the state requires anyone, Eversource, me, you know, National Grid has to provide. So in this suite, the basic just includes what's required, 62%. And then we'll have an optional product, which includes extra recs to reach 100. So 62% is our base, and then we would have an extra 38% to get us to 100%. This is an optional product, so people could opt into it. They would have to affirmably say, I want this. Of course, there's a higher price. You pay a premium to add recs into your supply. So for the most part, people would get this letter, and 30 days for the program starts, they can say, I want one or the other, or I want neither. And so that's product suite number one. Number two, we actually offer three different products, and the default does include some additional recs. So quite a few of our programs follow this product suite, quite a few follow product suite number one. It depends on the needs and wants of the town. But the default is kind of a win-win. We have some extra recs. We're also not breaking the bank to get to 100%, so it's supposed to be a good win-win. Here, the basic becomes an optional product, so you could choose to opt down and get the most economic benefits with the basic. Or the plus, you'll still offer that, goes to 100%. So I'd like to look at two different programs, just so you can see what the price implications are for choosing either of those product suites. So we have two programs that both launched around the same time, in 2016. We have, the red line here is the Eversource rate. It's jumped all around. It changes every six months, no matter where you are in the state. And that's why that looks so jagged, because we're looking at years of data. And then we have our two programs, Acushnet, which is blue, and Dedham, which is green. And you'll see the rate changes here. They went to bid at the same time each time, so that's why their, their timelines move very similarly. And what I want to point out here is, of course, the price stability that this program, a program like this offers. But also, Acushnet follows suite number one. It has no additional renewables in its products, in its default. And then we have Dedham, which is green, which is ever so slightly higher than Acushnet, but includes five and then jumped to 10% in January of 2021. So you'll see that little gap that starts to appear, but we're talking about tenths of a cent. So I just wanted to give you a look of what it looks like. The financial implications are very similar for both communities, regardless of what you choose for your default supply in terms of recs. And then we see for both communities, remember, Acushnet does not have any additional recs in its default, but it, of course, does have recs in its 100% product. So just in those two product offerings, Acushnet still saved 21% cost against basic service. And in their 100% product, with the few people that choose to participate in that, they're still putting, you know, 230 megawatt hours of recs back onto the grid. And that's like 180,000 pounds of CO2. That doesn't usually mean much, but using for comparison's sake, Dedham still saved 19% against basic service, put almost 5,000 megawatt hours on the grid, which is like 4 million pounds of CO2 pollution avoided each year. So really similar in terms of financial performance, really different in terms of environmental impact. And I'll just note before we move on to questions, this decision does not have to be made right now. It could be made either before we submit the plan to DPU or after it's been approved and before we actually go out to bid. We, of course, need to know before we go out to bid, but those are kind of our two injection points that we can, can make this decision.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Josh?
Why doesn't suite one have standard as a mid-tier option?
So we kind of find that people are, one or the other, we either find that people, we used to have a 50% product. So our full product suite used to be a basic, a standard, maybe 10, 15%, a 50% and 100. Because our RPS for 2024 is 62, and I think we'll reach 75% by 2027, if you add really anything more than 10, 15%, you're gonna hit 100 by 2028, like really quick. So we actually find that if people want to jump to 100, they're gonna do it. We can totally talk about having another option, like a mid-tier product. We have a community that does that, and we find that participation is like less than a percent. But if you think that people would be interested in that, we can look into it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm loathe to, I have solar, so this won't affect me all that much, thankfully. But I'm loathe to tell people that, I know you can opt out, but to say, at a minimum, or you're, you're all or nothing.
Right.
And so, I mean, not, nothing, because it's still 62%, but I, I don't know. I, I could see people saying, well, I want to help a little bit.
That's right.
Sure.
So I, I think not, I think more options are better. And I, I would be curious to see, maybe we'll get much buy-in, but I'd rather see more than less.
Okay, got it.
Andrew? So I'm sure many people had the same takeaway as I do when I look at this. And I'm quite surprised and pleased that the Long Meadow standard going up 10% is almost inconsequential more expensive, or only slightly more expensive. So my next question is, because I do believe many people would want to do something, but, you know, if it's, you know, the cost is always a factor, and if it's a small amount of cost to help and feel like we're making a difference as a town, then they're gonna be, I think there's gonna be a lot of buy-in to that. But then, my next question is, what do you think the increase would be to like go for 100%, for example? Because you're going from 62% to 72%, you're, and it's a very minimal cost increase. What would happen at 20%? Or now you're approaching 100%?
Yeah.
So is there a reason why we didn't put a graph to show what the cost would be at like 100%? Would it, would it be significantly higher?
I'll answer your last question first. That's a pretty small percentage of people. We would say like, of the people participating, 85% are in the default, like this is most of the people. Absolutely, we want to provide options for people who want to give a little more, want to give a lot more. I think there might be a slide in the appendix. I know you'll have to scan through it, but just if it's helpful, and maybe before we look at these, I'll just say. This is a very different market that we're about to look at. This is a different utility. But just so you can see kind of what the span of those is, I'll, I'll tell you when to stop. There we go. So we just did this bid not too long ago. The program launched in June, and this is their product suite. So they choose option two, where they added a little bit of extra renewables into their standard. They have a basic option that's optional, and then they have a 100% option. So our prices here go from 12 to 14 cents. So we're not looking at a massive range here. But especially when we had a summer like we did this year, those pennies really add up. So you'll see people's preferences change throughout the year, and, and they can absolutely move that around. But we're not talking like dollars. We're talking cents.
But even at 100%, the Beltre Town rate is about 80% of the National Grid rate.
Right, right.
So it's still a saving.
Right, and I, and I just want to say, we can't make that comparison. We don't know what utilities do every six months, but yes, that's true.
Mark?
Allison, just appreciate, when will, you know, Good Energy be able to tell people in Long Meadow what those two or three prices will be for the, you know, following the negotiation on supply?
Oh, as, well, as soon as we have a successful bid, we Oh, as, well, as soon as we have a successful bid, we chose a supplier, they, we've signed contracts, we've locked in rates. Usually from the end of the bid to the launch is like two to three months. So we actually start outreach maybe a month and a half before the program.
So you will bid the supply of Long Meadow prior to actually getting people to opt in?
Yes.
Or opt out? So people, when they opt in, hopefully, opt up, hopefully, will know the prices they're opting in for?
Yes.
Or opting up for?
Absolutely.
Or opting out.
Don't worry, we're not going to lock.
Yep, all of this, this is actually part of why we keep our outreach to kind of a limited timeframe, is because we want to come to everyone with like full information, rates, term, and RECs, so they can make an educated decision.
And just, so when you're bidding this to, I assume multiple, which is what you folks do, you've got a track record that says X percentage of the people in Long Meadow representing Y percentage of the energy use will take this. And so that's how you know what to offer these suppliers?
Yeah.
In terms of volume?
And we don't have to get into this if you don't want to, but it's actually a really interesting part of municipal aggregation, is if you're doing third-party supply, you're coming to one customer, the risk is really small. If I leave or I break my contract, whatever. Talking about, you know, a bigger, a bigger, a really big population that you'd be serving. When we go out to bid, they actually like that, the security of, well, let's give it 85% of people are going to participate, of who's eligible, not of the town. So they build in tiny little risk premiums to, you know, make sure that if so-and-so leaves and comes back, it's not going to break the bank, it's not going to affect your neighbor. So all of that is kind of baked into a rate that the supplier gives us, plus whatever we want for RECs. So all of that's like baked in.
Okay, I just want to ask one other question.
Yep.
So one of the things that I liked about this was that Eversource by law must change, rebid their supply contract every six months. What, not just what do you recommend for a length of a contract, but what's potentially possible out there? And to what extent does the town get to say to you, "We want a X length of time contract because it locks it in"?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, if we locked it in before Russia invaded the Ukraine?
Oh, yeah.
And we locked it in for 30 years, we'd be kind of sitting pretty here.
Yeah, yep, yep. We did some bids around that time, and it did work out. And we did, we did bids afterward where we bid a shorter amount of time. So we followed the, of course, the electricity markets, but also the gas markets are a great tell for what the electricity market is going to do. So when we go out to bid, we will go to suppliers and say, "Give us everything you've got. I want to see what it's going to cost if we add 5%, 10%, 20%, or nothing, plus see it for 12 months, 24 months, 36 months, as much as they'll give us." We'll come to you basically with every opportunity. And we, of course, will recommend what we think is best, especially when we go to launch. This program bid in the spring and was launched in the summer. We'll be looking to bid in, hopefully, early, well, yeah, late winter, early spring, and maybe launching next spring. So it depends on what schedule the utility is in as well. So they change twice a year, every six months, February 1st and August 1st. So depending on when you're launching, we would definitely recommend, "Ooh, let's, let's hold off a month and launch right before the utility's going to announce their rate," or something like that. But we kind of give you every scenario you could want, and you guys have lots of say. We will give our two cents as your consultant. But ultimately, we've seen anywhere is, you know, from 12 to, in this past bid, 12 to 36 months was the longest that one of our suppliers was willing to go out. But we have had programs that have run for four years on the same contract rate.
How do we, how do we get that option? I mean, my perspective, I think one of the things that I'd look for is offering residents of the town stability in their electrical supply. Not, not delivery, we can't control that, but their electrical supply. And two years is nice, three years may be better, and four years or five years may be even greater for stability. How do, how do we get that input? First of all, we've got to go find it, but how do we get that to you?
So the actual bid is, we have a pre-bid session where we come to you and we say, "Here's all our options, here's what we think, you guys can go back and discuss." It's usually like a week before, because the electricity market's pretty fast. Then on the day of the bid, if anything looks really different, we can always pull out. We don't have to make a decision. But if it looks similar to what we, the decisions that we had, the conversations we had in the pre-bid, we'll move forward within like, you know, an hour or so and have the contract signed. But we will have a couple of meetings leading up where we'll give you an idea of, "Okay, here's what the market looks like, here's what we're expecting in the next couple of months, let's pick a bid date." And we'll only take you out to bid if we think it's fit, and we'll only take the bid if we think it's fit.
All right, Dan?
Yeah.
This is a really nice presentation, by the way. This is probably a very dumb question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So on the town side, with town buildings and all of the town bills, are we voting as a select board to adopt this as well and choose which option outside of what the homeowners are doing?
Yep, so probably you guys already have an aggregation, a lot of municipal, yeah, buildings, schools, anyone that has really consistent electricity use. It's, you know, it just makes sense. So you're totally eligible, but you probably have your own municipal aggregation.
We already get Constellation. We have several contracts already for the towns.
So this isn't changing anything that we're?
If you look at the utility bill, the electrical bill that comes from the town, and there's actually a bill in here.
Yeah.
Like if you go back to, go up to it or something. And the bill says, your electricity is delivered by, it says Eversource, but in the towns, it says Constellation.
16.
16. Yeah.
Right there. There's a, this, I should get up. This one says supplier, it'll say ADC. The towns' bills, this now says Constellation. Most people in town, it probably says Eversource, but it will say Long Meadow Community?
Electricity.
Electricity, if once this goes into effect. Not a dumb question at all.
So who's making, oh, sorry, I was just to follow up very quick. So who's making that decision on the, on the suite? For the town, for the town?
You are.
Okay.
That's the?
You guys are making the decision about which product suite we want to put into the plan. That'll get, you know, DPU will approve. When it actually comes time for the bid, Mark, you might actually be the one in the room. Whomever we want to assign to be the signer, we really just need one or two people in the room. For the pre-bid meeting, we could have everyone in here to help make the decision. But ultimately, we just need one person to sign and fax back a sheet.
But I have a question. Once DPU comes back after the public review's over, how quickly could we go out to bid after that?
Well, we're, if, let's say, this ends October 7th, is the end of our public hearing. And then we have maybe a week or two that we actually spend filing and submitting to the DPU, plus 180 days. So we'll have that whole time, 180 days, where we're talking about what we want to do in terms of outreach and what we want to, you know, how we want to market the products. Once that's actually done, 180 days, we could go out if the market looks okay anytime in the next couple of months. Usually, we'll go out to bid, like we just had a bunch of plans come through, and we planted at them in October. So a month-ish is like a good benchmark.
Go ahead, Josh.
Does our, our aggregation bids, does our buying power change depending on how many people opt in? And, okay, so the answer to that is no?
No, so that's part of that little premium that's built in, that like safety risk management for the supplier, is we could have one person in the program and the rate's not going to change. They wrote that into contract in the law.
And my, my follow-up question was going to be, if it was yes, does Eversource try to fight back against aggregation and lower their rates for Long Meadow? We're exploring municipal fiber, and that's something we, we know Comcast is going to do. They're going to lower their internet rates to try to fight, try to keep their customers. Does Eversource do that, or are they just too big, they don't care?
No, thankfully, they actually don't care what anyone chooses for their supply. They cannot make any money off their supply. They can make as much as they want off of delivery, and I think we all see that.
Oh, that explains a lot, yeah.
But we, they can't actually make any money off supply, so it doesn't matter if we choose Eversource or the aggregation.
So it doesn't matter where it's coming from, everyone, okay.
Yep.
I just want, one of the questions that I get a lot is, so what took you guys so long to do this if it's such a good deal? Because it is a good deal. I think there's no downside that I can see for residents. And when I first heard about this, which was at a couple of MMA meetings ago, the towns were quoting, that was, not to throw stones here, but it was the prior administration in Massachusetts, in the governor's position. They were quoting two to three years to get the Department of Public Utilities to approve the suite. And this is no different from a rate submission like if Eversource wanted to, you know, go out and create a new rate system. It's like kind of they did for our streetlights, which was killing us because it took so long. And they were backlogged a long time, right?
Thankfully, we just launched Quincy's program. It was at DPU for over 1,000 days.
Right.
So it took a long time.
But, but now the new administrations come in and they said, gee, if 170 communities have figured it out, maybe it's not so tough to get that 171st community approved. And so now they're turning them over in?
180.
In 180 days. And so that's the reason why we hadn't done this previously. You know, I mean, it would have been good to start and get it in the pipeline, but in fact, by starting now, we actually aren't losing too much time over had we started two and a half years ago.
Yeah, Brian, Andrew, go ahead.
Well, simple question, just for perspective. So our 62% in Massachusetts minimum, just wanted to know how that compares to other states in our region or other states?
Interesting question. So we also run aggregations in New Hampshire and Rhode Island. And in Rhode Island, they keep it very clean. They have RI, Rhode Island existing RECs, so that's supporting already existing solar or even, even the burning of waste, like any kind of what they're calling renewable energy. They have existing projects, and then they have RI new, which is any new projects that come online, I think after like the 90s. So in Massachusetts, we have all of these tiny little subsections of Clean 1, Clean 2, a solar carve-out. And the 62% in terms of how much is actually mass class 1, that's really like the REC of all RECs. It's like, it's the new projects that we're funding to create demand for more renewable energy in New England. I think that is something like 28, maybe 30%. I can definitely show you a breakdown of what that looks like. But fairly similar in Mass, in Rhode Island, their RPS is 28%. So pretty similar to our MA class 1%, but we add on all these extra pieces of renewable that we want to fund. So we get to 62%, but the MA class 1 is closer to like 30.
So you lost me a little bit in minutiae.
Sorry.
But basically, does it sound like we're, it's about a commensurate commitment to renewable energy among these surrounding states?
Oh, yes.
Or we're not an outlier?
Massachusetts is like a pioneer, yes.
Okay, so we're like leading edge here?
Yes.
Okay.
The other thing that's worth saying is that that 62% goes up every year.
Yes.
So even if you sign up for the basic, this year it's 62%, next year it's 63% in the following years.
So we can be proud of that?
Yes, yes, you should be proud of that.
Anything else, just, Dan?
Quickly, so on the opt-in, opt-out, if I were to opt out, is, you said it's six months after that I can opt back in?
No, no, anytime. Eversource changes every six months. But you can come in basically as much as your meter is read. Everything that happens at the utility happens on the meter read. So you could one month say, "I want in," next month, "I want out." So you could basically change once a month on your meter read, as much as you'd like. You can come in when rates are great, you know, at the program, and if Eversource has a great rate, go and take advantage of it.
And the last question, there's no additional cost to the town in terms of like this opt-in or opt-out, and no administrative cost or anything that the town would?
No, no cost. Our fee, which is .001 cents per kilowatt-hour, is baked into the rate. So if the rate is 10 cents, it would be 10.1 with our admin fee. So we collect that off of the usage.
So it's their advantage to get more people in town?
Yep.
To sign up for?
Yeah, and I'm fully in support of this. I think this just makes so much sense. It, it helps us towards our climate goals. It makes sense financially for our pocketbooks. And it's just, I think, I think Mark, I mean, what Mark said, kind of long overdue. But, you know, glad that we're doing it. And I think Josh and a couple of others have alluded to how this conversation kind of, it seems, you know, there's some similarities with our conversation with municipal fiber as well. And they actually work together here in a way. Mark asked a question of Fiber Spring at the last meeting about how bonds could be backed. And if we have our own municipal aggregation, that is actually a way to finance through M-WIC and, you know, have backing for our fiber bond. So actually, you know, this, this was not some kind of grand strategy, but this kind of seems like it might be working out pretty well that these two initiatives are happening at the same time. I guess a question procedurally I had was, you mentioned that you would like for us to vote at our next meeting. And so our next meeting is October 7th, and I think public comment ends October 7th. So just want to make sure that's appropriate for us to do, to have this vote before, you know, public comment officially ends?
We were timing it to end with your meeting, so.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
So 7:00 PM, October 7th?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, that's great. That's fine. And then, and then, sorry, and I think I maybe misunderstood one point. So you said that there were two different junctures which we could have this vote. So if we do not want to vote on October 7th, and there is a later date that we could vote, is that correct?
That's for the suite.
Yes, so we would move forward then. If we didn't want to vote now, we would move forward in the plan, which basically gives us flexibility to do either option. And we would need to then make a decision after it's been approved and out of DPU before we can go to bid. So those are our two points we can make a decision.
Okay, great, thank you.
We still have to vote on some aggregation as a whole, though, right? On 7th, is that what I?
I think we're just voting on which product, right?
Voting on which product suite, we would want approval, of course, that this is good to go to DPU. That would be post-public comment. And if we do have any comments or questions that we feel we need to address in the plan, we'd re-drop the plan and then bring it back to you.
All right, great. This is a rate submission that has to go to the DPU, so we basically have to agree on the rate that we're submitting, or they're submitting on our behalf.
Great. Anything else?
Allison, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, energy, sustainability, folks.
I just got one little thing. You know, yesterday, we had a booth at the Pride event, and Andrew put out a pad to have people write down questions, if they had questions about this. I don't know if you guys are interested, there's only like three answers here they gave. But just to get an idea of what the public is asking out there. Do you want to hear?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
All right, first one, it was, is there a way to get a clearer about possible savings on electrical supply rates? So I guess you're going to know that people are going to be wanting to know right away what, how much money they're going to be saving. I'm sure that's going to be like a main question for like everybody, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I can just speak a little bit to what we see in our other programs. Typically, we're looking at a 5% to 10% savings. It's not landfall, if, you know, on your bill, maybe five bucks. It totally depends, of course, on the season that the utility is in. The utility typically, you know, we see summer, winter rates. We, they have changed when they go out to bid, so they're breaking up the two most expensive months in the year, January and February. So we don't quite know what that's going to look like yet. We don't expect it to be as volatile. But of course, we never guarantee any, any concrete savings because we don't know what the utility will be.
Okay, next one was?
Sorry, just want, real quick, I think one of the things to answer that is, what happens after you go out to bid and then you start notifying the residents? The Beltray Town postcard kind of summarizes what would happen similarly here in Long Meadow, and it shows the users what their savings would go. I thought there was one that showed it. Well, you do a post, on the postcard, you show people what their options are, so they can really get an idea on what their savings could be.
Yep.
Okay, another one was, how many communities around Mass have these plans? And how many of them have discontinued them?
Oh, actually, none. None have discontinued. We've got 170 in the state.
And the last one was, they, somebody wanted more clarity on how this will work with people to have solar panels, and if they have locked-in contracts or if they're a solar company or whatever.
Sure, yep, so net metering, if it's through Eversource, if they have solar, that it's being metered on their home, that doesn't affect it at all. If you create more than you use, and you usually get compensated for that, it's calculated still based on Eversource's basic service rate. So it's the exact same that they would be compensated if they were on Eversource.
That's good, then.
If they participate in community shared solar, so it's not on their home, but they get the benefits of it, that's totally fine. The only thing in terms of a locked-in contract, if they have a third-party supplier that provides them RECs, they would need to, you know, of course, evaluate if there's cancellation fees, but they would need to leave them to join our supply.
I think, Brian, that's a, I unfortunately read a lot of solar contracts. I think, Brian, that's a, I unfortunately read a lot of solar contracts. I think what that question is probably about is there are people who lease panels and put, made up 20 on their roof, and they pay for every megawatt hour that comes down. So I don't think this, that, that contract is between the panels in your house, although it does then go out too. So it's probably a more, a complex answer, but I think that you're, you're paying a certain amount and it's, they're all over the place. But I, so I don't know how that would affect it, but that's, that's probably what that question is, because you wouldn't have a locked in contract otherwise.
Right, yeah. It's, the easiest way we explain it like to residents, I mean, we wouldn't get into this in the public meetings, but is we show them a bill and I can tell you, I can tell you based on what your bill looks like, if it's going to impact you. And for the most part, it's the supplier section. If your net metering shows up on your Eversource bill, you're good. It's not going to be, it's not going to be affected.
Some, some people get bills from Tesla, for instance.
Right.
So I, I don't think that, I think that's a totally separate thing.
Yeah.
But I may be wrong, but that's what my, my guess would be.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Wonderful presentation. Thank you so much for being here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really appreciate it. And Energy Sustainability folks, thank you all for being here as well.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
All right. Okay, so next we've got select board comments. I've got a few comments about events past and future. Last week, we had a wonderful 9/11 event over at the Long Meadow Fire Department hosted by the Fire Department and the Police Department. I want to thank them for always putting on a great event to remember that day 23 years ago. And also, we were invited to attend an event at L-Y-A, another 9/11 event, and I want to thank them again for inviting us and making us a part of that great event. Last week, Fiber Spring folks, we talked about a community event where people would have a chance in the community to come and hear Fiber Spring's presentation and ask them questions. That will be on October 9th at the Adult Center at 6:00 PM. So we'll be publicizing that more, but that'll be a chance for the town to come and talk to Fiber Spring. Fiber Spring had a booth at Pride yesterday, and they had a lot of folks stop by and ask questions, so that was great. Stores Library is doing a, like their biggest fundraiser of the year, which is the weekend of September 27th. It's their book sale at the Community House. And the funds raised from this go a long way in funding all their library programming throughout the year, so this is really, really important. But that is September 27th, that weekend, and then they have one more drive-through book drop-off this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. And then also, forgot to mention that yesterday was Long Meadow Pride. It was a great event. I think that the organizers, Nate Munich and Elizabeth Morgan, mentioned, and a big thank you to them, they mentioned that the number of booths increased by 50% from last year to this year. And so that takes a lot of volunteers, a lot of different folks, you know, working hard to put that, to put that, to put that together. And so I want to thank everyone involved that, you know, that helped out. Josh?
Yeah, it's agreed on Elizabeth and Nate and everyone who worked with them. Kudos to them. It was a huge event, and I'm really proud of Long Meadow when I, when I see that turnout. And I think it, it also makes us, shows us that we're a welcoming community. I know the people come in from all, all around. I saw a lot of different license plates parked by the Community House, so that's great. There's also, I certainly didn't know, but Representative Ashton, Senator Olivera presented $10,000 from the state to the Pride Alliance, which I thought was pretty incredible. A big, they had the big check and everything. I wanted to address, I guess I didn't realize how much longer we would go. I was going to address some things that we heard at public comment, but we've lost all our audience that was here. But I, I thought that one of the things that brought up the select board, or sorry, the tree cleanup, separate budget, I think is a good idea. Mark mentioned at our last meeting, I think, that having separate, or pulling out of our reserved cash rather than DPW budget in order to fund things like that, because otherwise it does eat up our budget. I was talking to Lynn yesterday that we have our, we have a planning meeting on the 25th coming up, and one of the things that we talked, that I suggested to our facilitators to talk about, have a longer tree plan, because it's unmistakable that we have a lot of old trees that sometimes when I'm running around, I look up and I will cross the street, like, I don't know about that one. So there's, we're very proud of our trees in this town with good reason, but we have to take care of them, keep everyone safe. So, you know, I think, stay tuned on that. And finally, I just want to, I can't speak for the whole middle school building committee, but I'd like to discuss a few things that came up today. I was with a few other folks, and Lynn was there, Marty yesterday, at the middle school building committee, had a table of pride, had a lot of good conversations, a lot of productive conversations, a lot of interesting things that, you know, that people bring up points, and that's why we talk to the public, because we can't think of everything. But the one thing we have, I've said it before, I'll keep saying it, we had a long process, we had a lot of meetings, and to hear people say that this was done, it wasn't done in the open, or the, the public didn't have input, it does, I don't like to hear, because there was, we had specific outreach on things, and, and there was public meetings, but that's, people, a lot of people do pay attention to town, but a lot of people unfortunately don't until they are not happy with the decision that was made. And there was a lot of opportunity for public input. That being said, we got a lot of input still, and we talked to experts in making our decision on where we're going to, where we, our preferred plan. And that, that die has been cast. So there will be a vote on whether we want to have that or not, but I, on whether the town wants to do it. And so, at some specific points on that, we heard that the emergency services aren't involved. That's not, that's incorrect. I was talking to Deputy Chief Rigney yesterday at Pride, and Emergency Services has been giving input on, and having meetings, and have discussed traffic and will continue to do so. And we have, we have experts on traffic. I know that that is the number one concern we've heard from people, which I think, I would love to hear more on educational aspects, but we've heard a lot on traffic, and we have experts working on it. We know it's going, it's a concern, it'd be a concern anywhere in town, so we have to do the best we can, and that is absolutely the goal. And then the, the final thing I want to mention is, we keep hearing that there are zoning issues. Do residents not have to follow the same, or do, does the town not have to follow the same laws as residents? And I think the short answer on that is yes. I'm not a municipal law expert, but the town bylaws have limited power over municipal projects, one. And two, there's also a state law that's commonly known as the Dover Amendment that severely limits what zoning bylaws can restrict for nonprofit educational purposes. So I think the town has even stronger protection on that, but you can only, you can, using the Dover Amendment, you can put in buildings much larger than you would be able to normally and put in buildings in different places. Williams is in a residential zone, so if, if somebody said today, I want to put a giant building on it for a commercial purpose, they couldn't do it. But because it's educational, the guidelines are different. So again, the short answer is, does the same zoning laws have to be followed? To me, as far as I know, the answer is no. And we can have, I've asked Corinne and Lynn to run that down with our attorneys. So we will have more information on that if people are wondering, but that's, that's my understanding. And then, so finally, we heard from a traffic consultant today in town that lives in, is in a butter. And there are lots of people in town with incredible backgrounds and knowledge on a host of topics that we would love to hear from. If we have, we still have open meetings, we have, we're going to be meeting for the next three years. If people have input, I think it would, it's very valuable, because we want to do right. We want to make sure that we have a world-class educational place that serves the whole town and is everyone's happy with. Not, I mean, we can't make everyone happy, but I want to, we want to do our best. So it's almost time to close, so I'll stop talking.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Mark?
Yeah, I was at a meeting of the Scannick Valley Regional Health Trust, just as an aside, they're doing quite well. Financially, their forecasts for this year are following what they thought they were going to do, even though we got a zero, we and the employee who are members got a 0% increase in their medical premiums. So it is drawing down their, their reserves as planned. But the reason that I'm speaking today is because many people may know or may not know that the treasurer of the Scannick Valley Regional Health Trust is Paul Pesterzak, who was formerly the CFO of the Town of Long Meadow. And in the basement of the Community House, there happens to be a cabinet that has the records of the Scannick Valley Regional Health Trust. And the question came up is, as town is moving to its town hall, and as we're going to start clearing out the Community House, can the Town of Long Meadow find a place for that filing cabinet of records for the Scannick Valley Regional Health Trust? I don't have any answer to that, but I wanted to bring that up because, you know, we'll talk to Lynn and other people. It's not like they got 12 filing cabinets or even three, they've got a filing cabinet, but nevertheless, we've got to find a place for it, and I don't know where we're going to find a place for it, but the request did come up because somebody in the Scannick Valley region, you know, we can't put it in Paul Pesterzak's basement, and we can't put it in my basement, for example. So we'll talk more about that, but that's the request that's come up.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Just quickly echo the same, similar comments that Josh had said, as well as you, beneath, in terms of the, the Pride event that went on over the weekend. You know, it was nice to see Lynn there, as well as other townspeople, a ton of residents. And I had thought they were actually going to be downsizing, but in fact, I mean, I think you said, I think there's like 30 more, or like 60, 60 more booths, it was pretty crazy. But just want to thank all the organizers that came out, everyone that helped set up and volunteer. This is now my third year going and speaking, and I know Josh has spoken a bunch in the past in beneath, and I think something like Pride, I mean, this, this is an event that we should all be attending and going and supporting our residents, especially when this committee reaches out to each one of us to show support for our residents. And I think it's important that our leaders show up and attend these events. And like I said, it was a really good event to be at. The other couple of events, I wanted to say thank you to the police and fire for the 9/11 events, as well as L-Y-A. You know, it's always difficult in Long Meadow, we, we lost one of our own, you know, from Long Meadow, Jean Roger. So it's always a, you know, solemn day, an important day for, for us to attend and be present and think of, you know, the sacrifices that everyone made, you know, nearly 3,000 people. The other thing I did want to mention as well, about a few weeks ago, we did a townwide tour of buildings. This is now my third time on this tour. Andrew joined me this time, and I think, I've seen the buildings just growing up in town, but I think one of the things that made me most proud was the playgrounds. So the playgrounds, as you know, a couple of years ago was a, in my opinion, never should have been a contentious issue. It went all the way down to the last minute before town meeting, where the finance committee finally gave in to the voices of the residents of this community, that children that couldn't use the playgrounds and residents, their, their children, it's just ADA accessibility issues. And it took several residents to step up and say, we need to do the right thing and provide a space in the community for our youth to be able to play with their friends and get outside and have a good time. So I was so happy to see the, the playgrounds, multiple playgrounds during that tour. It was really nice to see. And tomorrow, we're going to be cutting the ribbon at a playground as well. So I did want to make, you know, a brighter note of that project. I thought it was very impactful, and we're seeing tons of kids every weekend, every day utilize the playgrounds. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I should have mentioned last meeting, but I attended the forum at the Adult Center for the demolition of the old DPW building, and there was actually, I was telling Lynn, there's probably about 30 people there, and Tim Keen from DPW as well. So this is just one of many conversations that are going to continue to, to happen, but it's good to get the public's input, and there will be more conversations. But, you know, with that said, that's really all that I have.
Great, thank you. All right. Town managers report?
Thanks. I will be quick, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but a couple of topics covering in here. The water interconnection study has been awarded to AECOM. This is to design a redundancy in the system to hook up either with Enfield or potentially an interconnection with East Long Meadow. So that's gone out, and they're starting their work. That, that was a funding at a town meeting article. And then the high school stadium field study, this is a study for synthetic versus natural grass feasibility. This was also a town meeting article. This was a citizen petition at the annual town meeting. A contract has been awarded to Tom Irwin Advisors. They're the contractor that advised us on Wolf Swamp fields, and that has been awarded in the amount of $50,000. And you'll see there's several phases that are included in that, including stakeholder visioning and interviews with the public and feedback sessions. So stay tuned on that. Attached to my report, this is more for the select board as a heads up for your next meeting, but the shared health services intermunicipal agreement has been drafted. It's gone through several iterations, and DPH has required that we do this as an intermunicipal agreement. So it's a long document, again, attached to this report. It will come to you October 7th for further discussion, but I did want to make sure you had time with this, because I will be asking for a vote either the 7th or the 21st, because we need to have this submitted to DPH by the end of October. And all of the communities within our shared services agreement are having these same conversations right now. And as has been mentioned, the elementary playgrounds, work is continuing at Wolf Swamp, but a ground, I'm sorry, a grand opening is scheduled for tomorrow at 3:15 at Blueberry, and there is one scheduled for September 26th at 3 o'clock at Center School. And the rubberized surfacing is being installed at Wolf Swamp, I believe, this week. So stay tuned for a ground, grand opening on that.
Great, thank you so much, Lynn. Any comments from the select board? Mark?
Yeah, I just want to make note, because we've had a lot of discussion about it, that the water usage is up about, I think it's like 17 or 18% over last year. Lynn, I think the data is phenomenal because it gives us a good sense of that, but I think it's also good, not good that it's up, but it helps us understand a little bit the complex nature of our trying to guess what the water's going to be, because last year was a down year, and this year it looks like it's certainly going to be a much, much more productive year.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We will move on to draft meeting minutes from July 15th, 2024. Any comments on these meeting minutes? All right. With no comments, I will move to approve the July 15th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. Next up, the Fall Special Town Meeting Warrant Update. So in the agenda, we've provided three articles that might appear on the Fall Town Warrant, and just wanted to give the select board an opportunity to discuss these articles before our warrant review begins at our next meeting. And so a couple of these, you know, we've already talked about, but kind of wanted to just kind of go more in depth. The first one that we have is the commercial vehicle bylaw that we talked about a few meetings ago. At that meeting, we decided to send it over to the Planning Board for them to take a look. The Planning Board took a look at them, made some revisions, and then sent it back to us, and that is attached to our agenda. And is Corinne jumping on to talk about this one? Okay, cool.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Corinne. Thank you for joining us so late.
Yeah, this isn't the last item that I have.
Oh, no.
So I'll just stay with you a little bit.
All right, great.
But so I attached a memo to the cover of this, just to, you know, in case any member of the public who hadn't been following along wanted some background on this, so I won't really go through the memo with you, but I do want to point out that I won't really go through the memo with you, but I do want to point out that if this, I know at your last meeting, you had a discussion about, you know, not wanting to rush this, and you would be okay if maybe it went to annual town meeting, but if you do want to bring it to fall town meeting, we would ask that the select board votes on this being the, or whatever you come up with tonight, as being the final language for the planning board to then go ahead and set their public hearing date, because they will only have, with the reminder deadlines and everything, they will only have one meeting to hold the public hearing before a town meeting happens. So with that being said, I'll just go through, there's a couple of comments that I pull off to the side, and at this point, this document, I tried to keep all the track changes in that you all made as well, so I just want to, so that everybody can see exactly what's being suggested by you, so I just want to be very clear, that black text in this document is existing language in our current bylaw. The blue and purple track changes are the original track changes that were made by Josh and then by the select board at your first discussion, and then the red track changes and the comments pulled off to the side, those are the comments made by the planning board, and so there's, there's just a couple of things that I would like to pull out here. So, the first point you can see where the planning board made a comment is, and Mike, do you mind scrolling up just a little bit? Oh, you can go down so that we can see the, okay, just stop, thank you. Do my, is it okay if I share my screen?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Is that going to take, okay, thank you, that I could just control where we're looking. All right, one moment. Oh, it's disabled.
Yeah, you should be able to do it now.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Not used to having an assistant like you, too helpful. So, we're in 31517, so this is uses in residence zones, as you know, the only thing that the planning board commented on is the commercial vehicle language that you were already commenting on, and so the first thing, the first point of information that they wanted to bring was around the, the language of, the weight of the vehicle that, sorry, the select board was originally suggesting could be parked in the driveway. So I think originally here, there maybe had been some discussion of weight, and the select board decided to remove that. The planning board liked the idea of having qualification of weight on there, so that we didn't, you know, we weren't accidentally allowing tractor trailers, for example, in so much parking, in so much driveway, but they did want to eliminate to class one or class two, as defined by the Federal Highway Administration. I believe that your last meeting, Josh, showed that graphic that was by the Federal Highway Administration that had the different classes of vehicles listed in there, class one and class two are considered like quote unquote, weight duty vehicles, and class two goes up to 10,000 pounds, but I believe that the definition itself is more than weight, it's also meant to encompass also the vehicle type. So this is actually the point of where the planning board had the longest conversation. There are many members of that board who are more knowledgeable about vehicles than I am, and they pointed out that 6,000 pounds, which I think is the limit of class one, and that is that, that number that the select board originally had set as that bottom limit, and later on, in the same section C here, to be parked to the rear of this straight line, and we'll get to that in a second, 6,000 pounds is actually like less than many of the commercial passenger SUVs weigh at this time, so if we were to limit vehicles to weighing 6,000 pounds in order to be parked in a certain area of the driveway, we would essentially be saying passenger vehicles, non-commercial types of the same vehicle versus the same vehicle that has a commercial plate, could be parked in the same location, and it doesn't seem like a real, a real like public safety reason to justify that. I do know that the weight limit was to try and, try and preserve sightlines, that gets at the bottom section C here. So, for example, Chris LaJolla, the planning board, you know, was pointing out that Jeeps now and, you know, common SUV models that we see driving around Long Meadow all the time, they, they weigh about 6,500 pounds. But that's what the planning board suggested, class one or class two vehicles are there, also because of course, the border enforcement officers are like wanting to be weighing vehicles themselves, so the, limiting it to types of vehicles rather than like weight of vehicles seemed more appropriate. So thank you for suggestion. And the next suggestion that they made in this exception here is against striking that clause that says that weigh more than 6,000 pounds, so that there's no limit there, and instead, the way that the sentence now reads, if you take out that strike through, commercial vehicles as a whole must be parked to the rear of the street line, they struck out setback here, and the reason there is because the street line, and this is a conversation that Josh and I have had, the street line is the, the end of the right of way and the start of private property. So essentially, the way that the planning board has redrafted this sentence, it's saying that commercial vehicles can't be parked on the sidewalk, they can't be parked on the road, they have to be parked directly in the driveway, but it's not requiring them to be parked all the way to the back of the street setback line, which is 40 feet from the right of way in the Residence One and Residence Two districts. And the reason that they, they're also interested in safety and preserving sightlines and everything like that, but the reason that they ultimately ended up making this recommendation is because in much of the R A one districts, so that you're probably familiar with this, but that's like a good amount of town, where properties are denser, oftentimes, the garages are closer to the street line than 40 feet, so actually, the street setback line goes behind the garage, and so in those cases, if any of those homeowners or property, you know, renters were parking the commercial vehicle there, they wouldn't be able to actually do the certified by for the commercial vehicle, because they couldn't get behind the 40 foot line, the 40 foot street setback line. So in order to be equitable to all residents driving commercial vehicles, they're recommending that change of language. And I did see, this is the most complicated area where they have made suggestions here, so I did see, I forgot one thing, too. They have added the word registered commercial vehicle in that first sentence, so the parking of no more than one class one or class two registered commercial vehicle. I know that there was back and forth about the difference between registered and active use with Josh's original draft here, but they discussed both, and they had preferred the word registered, because it entails a time limit of two years, and it's difficult to know, you know, it'd be difficult to prove that something was or was not in active use, quote unquote, within just a year's time or something like that. So that's the first clause that the planning board amended, and there's just one other, I believe, on the next, oh, actually, that was it, that's, that's the totality of their comments here. So again, the way that the planning board, I believe the sentiment from the select board was that, you know, this was a change that you were interested in initiating, you were inviting the planning board to review your proposed changes and make some comments back, so that's how the planning board is viewing this, and ultimately, it's the select board's proposal, however, so again, whatever you could decide, if you're ready to decide on any language tonight, whether it's taking the planning board's suggestions, continuing to amend it, et cetera, we would just need to know tonight if you wanted to move forward saying, sorry, special call time.
Great, thank you so much, Corinne. Josh?
I'm not saying this because this is 10:20 at night, but I would like to take more time on this. I'm really glad that the planning board pitched in on this, I think that it's really helpful, especially the R A one and R A two discussion, that's something that, I guess when I was thinking about this, I was more thinking of my street and not all the streets, and so I'm really glad that that was, that experience was brought in, but I, but I want to talk more about it and think more about this, and I feel like if we brought this to the fall town meeting, it's going to be a bit rushed, and so I'm not ready, I don't want to do it half-cooked, and I'd like to talk more, I'll go to a planning board meeting, I couldn't do the one where this was being discussed, but I would like to go talk about it and put our heads together. A couple of specific things on it, I think class one and two, I pulled up the F H A appendix, I think those are too small. If that doesn't include pickup trucks, I think that it's silly to have a commercial bylaw where we don't include pickup trucks. So that's my first issue, and then second, I really, as I said, I think that the R A one and R A two distinction on the street setback line is really helpful, and so, but I would like to talk more about that, because I, you keep saying 40 feet, is that because every setback in town is at least 40 feet?
The, the, the street setback line, so as opposed to the street line, right, so those are two different things, the street setbacks line is defined in the zoning bylaw as being 40 feet from the street.
No, it's not. I'm looking at it right now. It's the line running parallel or concentric to the street line is lining up at the front of the building.
Right, that's my understanding.
That's the primary setback line?
No, it's the street, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the bylaws.
All right, I'm stopping sharing, I'm pulling up the bylaw myself.
And this is, again, we, Corinne, you and I have talked about this, that a lot of these definitions need, need work.
This isn't, please. Okay, so. Mark, for what it's worth, I agree with Josh, I think this needs some, some more work, I mean, from what Corinne explained, and I'm not sure I gathered it correctly, but striking out the word setback significantly changes the intent toward, you know, enforcement of this, of this bylaw from what I think Josh wanted, or what I thought was it the last time this came up at a town meeting, so before we go do this, I'd want to go through it and take a look.
To me, the planning board has pointed out, astutely pointed out holes in what I proposed and what we discussed, and to say, let's get this on the warrant in two months, I think is not, I, that's too quick.
I concur, I mean, I feel like I, this has been very helpful, but it raises more questions for me, for example, the street line, I mean, I think that most of us would probably agree that if you have an opportunity to park it towards the rear, you would want to enable that, but perhaps make an exception for those residences that don't have it within 40 feet, or just define what the setback line is, which I also believe was in line with the front of the house.
So.
But we don't, we don't have to go into that tonight, it's pretty late, I mean, in my opinion, but one question I do have for you, Corinne, is, did you not get a sense at all then that the, that the planning board was, like, thought this was a bad idea, it's not like they said, hey, someone brought that up three years ago, that they were generally in favor of it, is that the sense you got from being at that meeting?
Yeah, I think, it's a great question, I think it's mixed, there's five individual people on the board, and there was not a consensus of like, yes, we need to do this now, but there was, I want to take the word consensus back, there was not universal agreement that this was like a urgent priority, but I would say that I, I do feel like I heard from three out of the five voices that they thought it was time to do it, and it is mentioned in our long-range plan, as I believe Josh brought up at your last meeting, and that is known amongst the planning board, of course, and so that was discussed as well. They, of course, they acknowledged that this is brought up recently at town meeting, and it's been brought up, it comes up regularly at town meeting, and it's a contentious issue, and it's often modified on the floor of town meetings, so there's also a sense that we, being the town staff and the board, should work hard to come up with something that is defensible and that makes sense, but there's sort of no way of knowing how the public, the public that attends this town meeting will react to it, so that's the sense that I got.
Thanks.
Just one slight point of that, I don't think this is what came up at town meeting four years ago. I was on the planning board when we talked about this, and I'd said, hey, I think we should update this whole bylaw, but we were, I think we were just looking at the definition of commercial.
Yes.
So, and that was amended on the floor, so that, I don't think that this issue has come up recently, I know that they have in the past, but since I've been in town and when I was on the planning board, we were looking at it from this angle.
Thank you.
If I could just, I know that this will not be discussed in detail tonight, given the sentiments of the board, but I do just want to give a point of information regarding the street setback line. So Josh, I don't know if the part of the bylaw that you were looking at was made in the definitions section, but if you look at, which you don't have to do tonight, when you're doing further research on this, if you look at 315, 31531, yes, A, street setback, it says the Residence A two, the Residence A one in agricultural zones, there's a whole bunch of words here, there's nothing, no structure, et cetera, shall be erected or constructed or placed nearer than 40 feet to the line of the street or way upon, upon which the law abuts. The, what I'm calling the primary, the primary setback is, is the street setback line, but that is that 40 feet, so the definition says the front of the house, but the front of the house can't be close from 40 feet, so that's why the 40 feet comes into play.
But there may be some pre-existing structures that have different setbacks, especially on the south side of town.
Yes, and that did not apply to the planning board, so yeah, so that's something to keep discussing.
I just, yeah, all, all more reason to, to continue to discuss this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great. Anything else on this? All right, seems like we're going to pass on this one for now, so we'll continue this conversation, but thank you all for engaging in this, and I think this is an important thing for us to take a look at, and I agree with Josh that better to do this right than rush this, so thank you all. Next is the specialized stretch code recommendation from the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Do you folks want to step up here and talk about this? Mark, you have your hand up, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, I just preview this, I understand where the committee's coming from. I was the champion of the town of Long Meadow adopting the stretch energy code, and I think people need to understand that from when we adopted it, it's probably 10 years ago or so, the stretch energy code in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has changed at least twice, maybe more than that, so it's much tougher now than it was when we even adopted it. My concern about this specialized stretch energy code, you know, we were having discussions back then of, would we put a damper on people who want to put additions to their house? Because clearly, there aren't very many, if any, new houses being built in Long Meadow, but people need to understand that if you have a new building code, any addition you put on must meet that new, new energy code part of the.
If it's big enough.
Yeah, right, and so the, you know, because we've always wanted to encourage people to put additions on, because that's our new growth in our, in our prop two and a half base, you know, we ought to be careful about making the, the cost of putting on that addition far too much, and frankly, the, the stretch energy code is already a stretch for a lot of people, requires, you know, instead of two-by-four construction, two-by-six construction, it requires extra, all that, the specialized energy code is going a very, very long way, and I think we need to understand, you know, as people often say, what the, what the unknown implications are of doing it before we just do, because in theory, it sounds like it's a great idea, you know, everybody wants to save more energy, but I think that there are unintended consequences that we ought to understand before we just say, yes, we ought to do it.
Well, sorry, let me, do you guys want to speak on this first here, and just kind of explain, you know, what this is, and, and anything else you want to share about this?
Yes, this is, like Mark said, this is a step above the stretch code, I'm not sure it's a huge step, and like you've mentioned, the, all the codes tighten up over time, so that whatever we adopt as, you know, either leave the stretch code or specialized code, those codes are going to get tightened over time. We did have a look back to see, right, had we had this extra code in place, what would the impact have been, it would have been very small, and would probably still be. And would probably still be very small, because I think you have to have a big enough addition for this to apply if we had this in place. Where it might make a difference, depending on when it's adopted, would be the middle school and the culvest project. But I think in terms of the residential area, it won't have much impact.
It'd only really affect anything over 4,000 square feet for residential.
Well, that's good to know, so it wouldn't impact people renovating their homes unless they're making some massive addition. So some immediate questions that came to my mind when I was learning about this, of course, was, you know, if we, for example, if we had the specialized code, how much more expensive would building the middle school be, for example? And then another question is, we're, in this case, you're balancing climate concerns with like, private development when you mentioned culvest, so I just wanted to address both of those individually. Do you have any sense that the way we would currently build the middle school, would that already kind of meet that code? Or would it be more?
I don't know.
Yeah, so that's an important thing to know, like, when we're talking about bonding, like, going to town for $150 million school, we need to know kind of, if we had that, what would happen there? Because that would impact everyone, obviously. Another thought I had was, you know, we, instead of a stick, sometimes you consider it carrot when you're thinking about trying to, you know, we want to encourage development in our town. We all care about climate change, of course, and renewable energy, and it's obviously, there's some virtuous things to making the code more stringent. But could you not consider, we as a town, if we wanted to make the specialized standard optional, but give those who adopt it, like a partial tax abatement, to mitigate some of the increased costs that they will bear? So in that kind of situation, we would achieve what we want from a climate change perspective and renewable energy perspective, but also avoid deterring businesses and maybe private development projects from, avoid deterring them from taking place, which of course also enhance our town. So I mean, I think this is the beginning of a discussion, but those are the kind of thoughts that I had upon initial glancing at this material.
And I think at the bottom of the document that you all provided, Appendix A, it addresses new school buildings, and it says that it would require the same efficiency, it would have the same efficiency requirements as the stretch code, plus wiring for electrification, if not solar, right? So, you know, that doesn't answer the question, but kind of gives us an idea of what, how that would impact.
It meets the stretch code, but not, isn't mentioned the specialized code?
Right, yeah.
So it would be additional, clearly?
Well, so the stretch code requirements, plus the wiring for electrification, and solar. So that's why, you know, it gives you an idea.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're saying the specialized criteria would be, you'd have to meet the stretch code plus have wiring for solar? I see, okay. So maybe it won't be as much more expensive as I, as we might think. We just need to know, kind of have that part of the analysis.
I think I might have a partial answer to it, and I agree with Andrew, we need to know the answer to that. Because we are already looking at spending a lot of money, including theoretically spending a lot of money on geothermal, climate control. And I don't know how that fits into this. I assume it's, you know, that's the gold standard now for efficiency, but I don't know how it fits into this. And wiring for electrification, I know that there's two rooms that will, or at least two rooms that will theoretically have solar panels on them. I know that, I talked to Kayla from JWA yesterday, who said that to multiple people. But I don't know if all electric means it has to have wired for splits in every room, or if the geothermal does work. So that is, to me, that's the big unknown, because reading the other, everything else, it doesn't sound like this is going to affect, as you said, all that much. We don't have much land to build on. But we, when we are one of the entities who are going to do one of the big buildings, hopefully, we need to know how it's going to affect us.
Oh, I had one additional follow-up. So it's only new construction, so not renovations, correct? Or renovations greater than 4,000 square feet, it does apply to that?
If the renovation's more than 4,000.
Okay, so for example, the community house and the town hall, if those were renovated, it would impact that as well? It could. If it's big enough, yeah.
See, what this is just trying to do is get everything up to date, because when the state goes green in 2000, 2080 or 50 or whatever, they got planned there, you're going to have to do all this anyway. That's why they want the electrification in there, so there not won't be fossil fuels then around anything, so. Green energy.
And I think it's Josh's.
Just like the municipal aggregation, moving towards that.
It really, I would be surprised if the middle school is planning on doing geothermal, that this would not, you know, fit that.
I would be shocked.
Yeah, yeah. So it's like, if that's already the plan, this is...
This is going to be like lead gold certified, or green certified, whatever it is.
Right, yeah. Sorry, Dan, you have something?
Just a couple of questions, so has your committee looked at other communities similar to Long Meadow that have been in this scenario and they've adopted it?
Imherst adopted recently, so we've had a couple of meetings with some of their people who implemented it.
So I'm sure they probably had some of the similar questions, that Andrew made some good points.
Yeah, they didn't have, I think there wasn't mention of a new school. And they have a little more room for development, but they wanted to, my words, they wanted to be ahead of the curve when it came to adopting this. They wanted to show how serious they were about.
And the other question is, does this, I know Corinne's on the line, but does this open us up? If we're to adopt this as a town, open us up for other, like, grants and funds that might be available with the state to getting to this next level?
Not that I've heard of.
Yes, it would. But those grants programs, at least the ones that I'm aware of, they also have other requirements, so it's not just adopting the specialized stretch code. Like, for example, we're a green communities, community, that's a D O E R grant program. They have created a new grant program over the past couple of years, two new grant programs. One is called Climate Leaders, and the other one is the Decarbonization Grant, I think it's called. And I believe, you know, speaking off the top of my head, wasn't prepared to talk about this tonight, but I believe that for the decarbonization grant, this would be a requisite. And for the Climate Leaders Grant, this is definitely a requisite, but there's other commitments that the town would have to make as well, such as converting to a hybrid and electric fleet, for example. So it's not just a checkered box, and then it opens up for grant dollars.
Thank you, yeah, great question. Brian?
I just found a thing here on one of our papers here. It said, during a meeting with a K-Cod builder organization, a developer or home builder stated that average home K-Cod will cost homeowner $30,000 more than a home built to base code. But in reality, the Department of Energy Resources states that after incentives, homeowner, the homeowner would save $20,000 in building for a 2,500-square-foot home.
That's the base code, not the stretch?
No, it said the stretch.
Yeah, and that's also talking about a new construction, which...
Yeah, because there's incentives and stuff that are available to the homeowner.
Do a building a new house in Chicago.
So, you know, we don't have to vote on anything tonight, this is just kind of to, for the select board to ask questions, better understand this before we start our article, before we start our warrant review. One thing that I saw at the bottom of this document is that the Energy and Sustainability Committee's recommending that we hold, you know, two, or, you know, they hold, somebody hold two well-publicized presentations, so that folks are maybe more informed of this before town meeting, is that kind of the gist of it?
Yeah, but hearing in the last issue, there's only room for one, only time for one more public meeting, and you've got some open questions, I think it may be not.
Yeah, go ahead, Andrew. Do you think that, you know, this question about how much it might increase the cost of the middle school, is that something that you can actually find out, or someone?
There's no way we'll be able to get the number now.
Yeah, that's what I figured, it's not simple.
That would be a next, well, actually, the answer might be nothing. The answer might be the proposed design review is going to incorporate all this already. If the answer to that is not, if that's not the answer, then it could be, we'll know next fall, I would think.
Josh, is there someone you can connect them with, to, they can fly the codes, and then the person, the architect or can give an opinion? Because that would be very valuable, I think.
Alright, anything else on this? Alright, thank you both. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks so much. See you next meeting. Am I signed ready?
Alright, and next, we've got the public shade tree bylaw, and is that the? And then we've got Leah to speak about this one, our tree warden.
Hey, everyone.
Hi Leah, thank you so much for joining us. Do you want to walk through this one for us?
Yeah, so this is the draft tree, public shade tree bylaw, which you have recently reviewed in the form of regulations. Back in, I want to say April, might have been the last time you had seen them, maybe, it looks like May. And so since May, the town management, Corinne Lynn, Sean and myself, have met with town council, who kind of, you know, went through the document as a whole. And I think the main sticking point we had had in our previous discussions internally and with you all was regarding the fees and how those were allowed under MGL 87. So, you know, one of the big reasons for switching from regulations to a bylaw was, you know, adopting regulations under MGL 87, that can only be done in terms of public shady trees. So moving to a bylaw here, that would be able to incorporate park trees, trees on school properties, that kind of, trees on other town-owned land that are considered within the right-of-way as a public shade tree. And then also, you know, provides a bit more of formality. And then there have been written provisions within the draft bylaw that then state that the tree warden has the opportunity to adopt regulations, much like a lot of other bylaws in town. So the big part of the revisions that have been made, that I'd like to draw your attention to, I think it's page seven, which defines the fines along with the, you know, potential mitigation. So there we go, right there. So if you go up just a little bit, there's the unauthorized tree pruning alterations and rules and fines. The last time we had spoke, there were concerns, or, you know, there's a, it was hard to kind of clarify what fines were really being discussed, so we wanted to make that a bit more obvious here. You know, we called out the $500 fine that's defined in MGL 87. You know, there is also the fine for just destruction to town property, similar to a lot of other bylaws. I've seen it in wetland violation laws, where they allow a fine of up to $300 per day for violation. So that avenue is called out here, along with other legal enforcement action by the town. If there was anything else that, you know, was damaged in the process, anything else we find necessary to make grounds for an additional fine. So we also call out restoration in this section. When I think of the restoration portion called out here, I primarily think of things like we're seeing on Long Meadow Street in terms of the L project. You know, there's obviously quite a bit of trees that were removed in that area, and therefore restoration was determined necessary, and it was, you know, a fund was set up to have that kind of buffer for additional tree plantings. And it allows for both onsite and off-site mitigation for those plantings, because we don't always, you know, we take trees from one area, and ideally, you know, it makes sense to kind of put them back in that area. However, we do tend to overcrowd, and it might not, in that specific instance, make sense to replant in that location. So this allows for, you know, especially bringing some other trees to town. So of course, they'll provide a town with that good, but in locations where it's maybe underserved or need additional, you know, shade cover there. If you go down just a little bit further, this is kind of where we get more into the, when a tree was removed, maybe without permission from the tree warden in violation of MGL 87 and the bylaw. Also, another instance could be for, this could be used, structure could be used for if somebody were removing a town tree that got approved at a hearing, but it was for purposes such as creating a driveway or something of that sort. You know, this defines the mitigation per inch. So that's where we take previously, we were previously calling this fines, and now we've moved it to mitigation for removal of a healthy tree. It allows the tree warden to define proper mitigation for those removals at a, I think it's an inch by inch, sorry, the little bubbles in the way, so I don't know if I can see. Yeah, so we're calling out either contribution of funds, or they're required to replant them in a, replanting of trees. And then in Section A there, it kind of defines the parameters of replanting those trees, so that way we're not running into any issues where people are purchasing maybe trees that are too small, that are set up, going to be set up to fail or not be able to survive to a certain age. I was just brought to my attention at a mass tree warden meeting that a lot of urban street trees have a lifespan of between, I think it was nine and 25 years, so it's not really that long. So we want to make sure that we're kind of making this bylaw in a way that would help kind of enhance that. Maybe we're getting more towards a 25, maybe we're exceeding the 25, rather than, you know, getting a lot of biomass in the ground at the moment that are just going to have to be removed again later. So, you know, the idea of bringing this back to you all was hopes to have it reviewed. Any additional questions or need for clarification can be vetted out in time for tomorrow, where the tree committee is going to review, and I've requested a vote for support on this bylaw. The conservation commission is also requested to review this, because it is, it does include trees on conservation land. There might be a little bit of a rub there, so that meeting will be held on the 25th. And then ultimately, after those, all of those discussions and comments are combined, the hope would be to put this on the warrant for fall town meeting and put it through.
Great, thank you so much, Leah. Any comments from the board? Mark?
Leah, thank you for doing this, this is a lot of what we asked for. I'll tell you that, and I'm going to use this kind of as a soapbox for my own situation, or situation that's come up. You know, we have, adding this as a bylaw will also imply an obligation by the town to do a lot of work that they now don't do very well. And I'm going to refer directly, and Leah, you know, because we've had the email back and forth, requests for tree pruning. You know, I mentioned it two weeks ago at our select board meeting, there's a tree down the street from me that fell over in a storm a month before, it still isn't being pruned. If we can't get that done, why are we going to impose a bylaw? This goes back to, do we require the town to do the same things we require the residents to do? Clearly, these bylaws are great to say to residents, you can't trim a town tree, you can't cut a tree down, you can't remove a tree. But if we're going to impose a bylaw, and it's a bylaw, we have to do it with the thought that we're going to impose it on the town as well as on the residents. And if we're not equipped to, you know, fulfill the letter and this, as well as the spirit of the bylaws, we ought not create the bylaw until we have the resources needed to do it. Frankly, I think our budget is woefully inadequate to maintain this. Leah is doing a great job in terms of what we're doing with residents, but in terms of what the towns are doing, we don't have the budget to support this. And so I think before we do that, or at least while we do this, we've got to go hand in glove with coming up a way to do this, because you can't have bylaws and say, but the town can't afford to do it, where it takes us six months or a year to get something done.
Anything else? So just to clarify something, Leah, the tree committee is going to be meeting tomorrow and looking at this?
Yes, we're meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock, it's on as an agenda item, I think it's, I asked them to put it on as a public hearing discussion item.
Okay, so there may be further revisions to this? Okay, so there may be further revisions to this?
There shouldn't, I don't anticipate further revisions from them. I might anticipate some from the Conservation Commission requesting that trees on conservation land are omitted from this. As, you know, I, I have a great working relationship with the commission, however, you know, they're thinking in longevity terms, you know, they don't always know that the next person will have a good working relationship with them and they, you know, are a bit more protective of their land because typically, most of the time, their trees also fall within jurisdictional resource areas. So they'd like to have a little bit of extra capture on their end as well.
Okay, great, thank you. So if there's nothing else, thank you so much for joining us, Leah, and we'll continue this, this discussion at our next meeting. Thank you. All right, next, we're moving into new business and the Massachusetts HERO Act Property Tax Abatement Local Option Adoption. This actually, we do not need to discuss tonight, this is informational, but we will need to discuss this basically a year from now for adoption in FY 2026. So don't need to discuss it unless somebody has any comment that they want to make about it, but this is just an informational item on the agenda time. Okay. Next, we have the zoning bylaw change referrals, and this is the process that we have to follow where we have to refer these zoning bylaw changes to the planning board to continue the process for it to get onto the warrant at town meeting. Anyone have any comments to make on this? Go ahead, Josh.
When we were doing the codification to put the bylaws online, I occasionally in my day job, I have to look at some of our definitions and zoning bylaws. And I was hoping that some of them would get caught as not making sense when they were codifying them. And I'm really glad they are now being addressed. So I, I think all of these are fantastic changes. And the, the more we can work to make these clear, so when people read them, they don't have to, they know exactly what they need to do. I think that's, that's great.
Great, thank you. Anything else? No? All right, well, I...
I'd move we refer these, uh, these revisions as proposed in the memorandum from Corinne to the planning board for review and public hearing.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, great. Next, yeah, thank you, Corinne. Next, we've got the Center School Carnival Street Closure Application.
I'll move we approve the street closure application for Center School on Long Meadow Street for September 20th, 2024.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. And next, we've got the Center School Halloween Hustle 5K Street Closure Application.
I move we approve the Center School Halloween Hustle 5K Street Closure Application for October 26th, 2024.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Dover Road Block Party Application?
I move we approve the Dover Road Block Party Application for September 22nd, 2024, the rain date of September 29th, 2024.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? And next, we've got a one-day liquor license application from the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund.
Move we approve the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund Application for one-day liquor license for, for October 3rd, 2024.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. And we've got correspondence. I think, I just wanted to mention one item, the Pollinator Garden Letter to the Select Board. This is an item that was talked about during public comment by Jeremy and Penny Dugan. This is something that we're looking into further. They made a request that the Select Board approve a pollinator garden in the tree belt in front of their property. And I think we're looking into it to see if we actually need, if they actually need approval from the town or not. And so I, I think, I don't know if they're still on, but if they still are, just, just hold on and we'll get back to you on that one. And thanks for, thanks for staying on. Anything else on correspondence?
I just, a couple, so the pollinator correspondence, that was, I thought that was pretty cool to hear from the residents. I think that's a great idea, something we should definitely look into, especially with climate change. And, you know, we see a lot of folks who might be like obsessed with their, their lawns, but the Dugans are, you know, stepping up and doing nice things for the, the property, for the town. I think it's a good idea environmentally. And then the other piece was on the, the Board of Registrar, just a quick question. I think last meeting, the folks that were here, they suggested that they, they didn't receive a, a letter back.
Yeah, so there was some, there was some initial confusion with that. I had drafted a letter. There was some confusion as to who was sending it out. On my record, I indicated that I did send it out, but it's possible that it never made it to Mr. Rogness. So that letter was then amended to extend the deadline to later this month. This way, if there was any confusion as to if the letter was received by him or not, they had plenty of time to submit it. So I extended that deadline to September 26th. Originally it was September 10th, they did get it in before our meeting, so we...
But, but the town did send them something?
I didn't send it certified, so I have no rec, you know, like it was a busy week. I could have very well printed it out, left it on my desk and never put it out. That might be what, what could have happened. Just being transparent as possible.
Anything else?
Move we adjourn?
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, we got in under 11. Thank you all.
Thank you all.